Thank you for that update. I know that we are working with some new technology, so I'm hopeful that will be resolved soon. So please be patient if you can read my lips. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of previous meeting. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we approve both sets of minutes.
Mr. Braden, is that second?
Yes.
All right, any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All right, that motion passes too. At this time, we have on the agenda Off Pike Market presentation. Would the Off Pike Market presentation people come on up?
Okay. Can everybody hear me okay? Good? All right, thanks council for having us tonight. My name's Jason Provins. I'm the Executive Director of Off Pike Market. I have Hillary Cannon with me. She is a board member. And tonight, we just wanted to give you an overview of Off Pike Market, where we've been, where we currently are, and where we'd like to go. And really, our bottom line is just to ask for your support, consideration of what we have going. So I'll first start out, I gave you a business plan. It should be on your chair, or at least in front of you somewhere. This gives a very high level of Off Pike Market. So we started two years ago, roughly, as a kind of an idea. We noticed that Norwood did not have a regular meeting time and place where business and community could connect, specifically micro businesses. And my wife and I have a passion for micro businesses. We love little markets that happen around Cincinnati. So we're like, Norwood needs one of these. We thought it would be a side hobby and a project, and we started to notice that the community really got behind it. They said, hey, we're gonna show up and drove. So our first market, we had about 250 people there, which was a shocker. We really just expected our parents and maybe a couple of friends. And as we started to talk to the community, we saw that there was kind of a hunger for micro businesses, for things that are local, and for the community to have a space in which they can see their neighbor and talk. So as we grew, we noticed there was a farmer's market happening in Norwood. So we said, hey, where are you guys at? And they were like, well, we're kind of looking to partner up with somebody at this point, but why don't we partner up with you? So the farmer's market joined forces with us about a year ago. And that's when we really started to kind of dig in and realize that Off Pike Market was something a little bit more than a side project. So we started looking at brick and mortar spaces. The very like long-term vision for Off Pike Market is to provide a space for the community to gather, but really to help micro businesses grow through training and development and a low entry risk to the market. When you think of what farmer's markets do for like a small or micro business, is it gives them an opportunity to test their product out, to practice selling, to see if what they have is something that people will buy, and it's sustainable to grow into a bigger business. So we kind of questioned this, and we started talking to our community, our neighbors and friends, and we started to ask, you know, is this something you guys would want? Is this something that Norwood needs? And we got a resounding yes on multiple different interviews. Hillary will go into more of that during her speech. So we developed some ideas of where we could place a brick and mortar, and we noticed that Norwood has an old historic, we're gonna call it historic, market building. And we thought it might be a great place. It's right next to a park, and kind of in the center of town, and it might give a great opportunity for economic development in the community to engage. So we developed, we brought in a friend that was an architect to do basically an outside rendering, just to see if there was some excitement in the community about it. So when we presented, we got, again, a resounding yes. Wow, this is so exciting. We'd love to see Victory Park revitalized. We'd love to see that old market building revitalized, so we can kind of continue our journey. And that's where Hillary steps in, and she'll tell you kind of where we're at today.
Hi. So as Jason said, my name's Hillary Cannon. I'm a resident here in Norwood. I am also a journalist, and I've covered community development in a lot of different places. And my job and my training is to collect information from people and to synthesize it. And so I got involved with Off Pike Market two years ago, and roughly two years ago, I also started working with the Norwood Quality of Life process, now Down East Norwood, together. And I bring that up because I think it's really important to know that the vision that Jason talked about, and the reason why we even started talking about this market building at all, really is not from the Off Pike Market Board. It came from the community. My job with the Norwood Quality of Life from the very beginning, that process, as many of you know, started with community interviews. We interviewed residents and stakeholders and businesses in the community. We did dozens of interviews, 70 or more interviews. And I did a lot of those interviews myself, but then my job on the Quality of Life team was to take all of those interviews that we dumped into spreadsheets into categories, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and sort out what were the things that everybody kept talking about. And over and over again, the things that, among the things that everyone kept mentioning in those interviews were, we want to see Montgomery Road and the business district there brought back to life. We want to see those empty storefronts filled. We want to see all of our parks, but especially Victory, because it's right there in the center, come to life and feel safe again. And we want to see historic buildings like the former Safety Lane building, and that got specifically brought up repeatedly. We want to see those revitalized. And then, so that was happening. And then, at our first Off Pike Market at Schumbrich &amp; Lees, when, as Jason said, we had 250 people come through, Taylor and I were sitting at the front, and we had so many people stop in. We had a sign-in sheet, in case you wanted to hear about future markets, and they would stop, sign the sheet for future markets. And many, many, many people said, hey, you know what? There used to be a market over at Victory Park. Did you know that building used to be a market building? That was really where this came from. It came from the community, and it was just something that came up over and over and over again, until finally, it was like, well, maybe we should consider this as our market continued to grow. Also, through the Quality of Life process, we were able to get connected with business mentorship programs. HCDC has a program that we were able to take advantage of as Off Pike Market. And we were able to talk with industry leaders in the region, people who are doing Findlay Market development, they're doing community redevelopment across the region, they connected us with resources, they told us where next steps might be. And there was a lot of enthusiasm and excitement from residents about this, but also from outside to say, hey, we would really love to help you guys. So as we were doing this research, like, we were trying to figure out, frankly, there's five of us, and redeveloping a building like that is a huge project. So the first question was, is this even viable? And so we've been doing our research. And as we were doing that research, as we reported back at a Parks Committee meeting that Eric Thompson was nice enough to let us come to, we told them that we were doing that research, trying to figure out, do our due diligence as is possible. And one of the projects that came up, funding possibilities that came up, was a community development block grant. Now, you all know, and some of you in the audience might know, but for anyone who doesn't, a community development block grant is federal dollars that are distributed down, in this case, HCDC is the organization that distributes it, to municipalities and their partners, to, among other things, spark economic development in that municipality. So we were told that this might be a good funding opportunity if the city was willing to partner with us, and encouraged to fill out the first step in the process, which was a pre-application. Basically, it's an application to see if we were allowed to apply. And we did that in July. We went to the city administration, and with city administration approval, we filled out a pre-application for this community development block grant. We got the okay. HCDC said, yes, go ahead and apply. So what we're presenting tonight is a draft. At that point, we decided that we did not want to move forward on even the application for this project with just city administration approval. This is a project in the heart of the city that is meant to be a community gathering space and spark economic development. We believe that no project at this site works without the support and input of the community. And that's why we immediately, as soon as we got that pre-approval okay, we asked council if we could come and present tonight, because what we want to do tonight is let you know where we're at, and hopefully gain your support for the project, and assure you that we continue to keep giving opportunities for community input moving forward if we do gain your support. So the application is due on August 23rd. And I just want to note real quickly that the way this process works is that once you get that pre-approval to go ahead and apply, you have an opportunity to talk with HCDC as the organization distributing the grant, to talk to them about the strengths and weaknesses of your proposal. So we've had that opportunity since asking to be on the agenda, and one of the things we heard back is that right now, a major weakness in our proposal as it stands is that we, as a partner organization with the city, the grant is to the city, not to us, right? These grants go to a city. As the partner organization, without having a long-term lease on that property, this sort of funding opportunity is unlikely to get approved. And for the federal government, a long-term lease means 10 years or more. So we'll get to that, I know there's probably questions around that, and we'll get to that in a second. But I just want to go over the rest of our proposal as it stands now, for everyone at home. And this is just a draft. As I said, the point of tonight is to gain any input you have, and also any input from the public. If people out in the audience now, or at home watching this, want to give us some thoughts and feedback on the proposal as it stands right now, we would love to hear that. We'd love any feedback you have on the market. Our email is hello@offpike market dot com. So as far as our proposal goes, we're proposing that this becomes a public-private partnership. Public is the city, private is us, Off Pike Market, we are a nonprofit, we have our 501(c)(3). And we're proposing that this grant, $100,000 grant, will help us restore the former market building to its original use, creating a physical location for Off Pike Market and its vendors to continue to spark economic development in the city, and provide space at the center of the city for residents to gather and support local businesses. $100,000 is not going to do it. This is the beginning of a much bigger process. Part of this grant, though, we have to set out milestones and things that we'll do with this money. The major request here is to get architectural, detailed architectural renderings and construction estimates for what the actual renovation of the building will cost. We're proposing to do that within a year, as well as get the building, do whatever smaller construction is necessary to get the building dry. We have had the opportunity to walk through that building, if any of you have. There are a few leaks in the roof. There are points of just getting the building dry and secure. There's gonna need to be some minor construction to that point. We're also saying that within a year, we will complete environmental studies of the property. This building, as you all know, has had a lot of uses, including was the former Safety Lane building. Cars drove through it on a regular basis. If this is a market where food and drink is happening, we want to make sure that it's safe and up to standards. And also work with the city to develop a master plan for Victory Park. We know that there's a lot of uses at that Parks Committee meeting that we were at. We talked with Donna Lake about her plans for a splash pad at the old pool. There's already the very well-kept Veterans Memorial at the front of the park. This is absolutely a space that has a lot of different uses. We need to have a master plan for it. And also work with the city to develop a plan to make sure that everything in that building has an appropriate home as we move forward, so that that building can be used as a space and a gathering space. Along the way, we propose that there will be regular community input sessions and visioning sessions, because again, this is not just our vision, this is the community's vision, and we want to make sure that it is the community's space. So our hope is that if we do this, in the short term, what will happen is that by Off Pike Market, and by the way, we're continuing, we have markets along Mills Avenue right next to this building through September this year, and our intention is to continue those monthly markets next summer, next season on Mills Avenue. We've had a huge amount of success. This coming Saturday is a market Saturday. We have 27 vendors coming, AJ's Cheese Steaks, right? Graters will be there. It's the dog days of summer, too, right? So we continue, we continue, plan to continue doing programming along there regardless of this proposal, but certainly with this proposal, that will ramp up some of those efforts potentially. But in the short term, the programming that Off Pike Market will provide for that building and this area will spark renew, well, funding. We know that there are funders available. But also, on a day-to-day, get rid of some of the undesirable activity that's happening there, loitering and that kind of thing, and bring some life back to it, and make it more of a community gathering place than maybe people feel comfortable with right now. We know that that's, we don't think that that will happen. We know it will happen because we see it happening with our markets now. If you come before the market opens at 10 o'clock on Saturday, if you come at 9 o'clock when our vendors are setting up, you will see people leave that park. You will see people during the market, maybe walk across from Kroger or whatever, realize that there's something happening in the park, and walk away. We see it happening every month, and so we feel very, very sure that if we continue providing programming in that space, we will see that space become a safe point that people in our community can come to and have fun at. In the long term, we really believe that having both our monthly markets, and then eventually, a more concrete, physical location will give all the Norwood entrepreneurs that we have, and we have a lot. Most of our vendors are local. I see several of them out in the audience right now. That it will give them a place to grow their businesses, strengthen their business plan, and hopefully start to get to a point where they can fill some of those, not just the market building, but maybe some of those storefronts along Montgomery Road. We think that this can be a catalyst for a long-term economic development in the community. So Jason and I are gonna be here to answer any questions you might have. I'm sure you have some about this. But I want to be real clear about what we're asking for tonight. What we're hoping for from you as council is support for Off Pike Market as a partner with the city in applying for this community development block grant. And as part of that support, that you would be supportive of a long-term lease on the building, or at least us working with the city to develop a long-term lease of some sort, so that we would have a stronger proposal, because as I said, right now, we've been advised that without a long-term lease on that building, this kind of funding is unlikely. And if you're not ready to do that, what we want you to take away from tonight is that there's a huge amount of energy and interest and support in the community for the redevelopment of this property. And in addition to that, there's a huge amount of interest from funding organizations in the greater region in helping Norwood develop this property. So if you're not ready to give full support to our proposal as it stands right now, and the idea of a long-term lease, then we hope that you will consider, sooner rather than later, putting out a formal RFP, a request for proposals, for us and any other interested parties, to be a partner in this property, so that you're ready to take advantage of funding opportunities. Because we know that there, for instance, in the community development block grant, we know that there'll be another round in the spring. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. The question, your long-term lease, have you discussed any of the parameters for this time?
I'm not sure that was heard.
I'm sorry. Hello?
There you go.
Sorry. For the long-term lease, have you discussed any of the parameters associated with this, that lease at this time?
So we've looked at it, at least from our perspective, on what we might need as a, you know, running sort of business, but we haven't had formal conversations with anybody from the city regarding that. I think what we wanted to at least garner was some support first, then move into communications about it.
I think it's important to note, too, I mean, honestly, we were talking about that long-term lease and what that might look like from a business plan, and then this opportunity came up, and we decided to pursue the opportunity. And then we found out that, wait a second, we need to back up, and we do need that. So we're at a point where we need to talk about it.
So it, it's difficult, why, I absolutely love the idea of revitalizing that marketplace. You know, I've been behind the idea for a long time. It's difficult for me to get behind the idea of a long-term lease, not knowing what the terms of that lease is. A 10-year lease on a public city property, not knowing who will be required to do the upkeep on it, what kind of revenue that sort of lease would generate for the city, if any revenue, would it be more of a burden? These are kinds of things that I feel like I need to know before I could completely throw support behind the lease portion. I'm fine going after the grant, as I see it as a very good first step to even determining the viability of the structure. But I'm tough on a long-term lease with, it's almost like, as you said, you know, if you didn't go with this, go with an RFP. If we're looking at throwing in a 10-year lease, I want that market to have the best chance it can possibly have to become what everybody wants it to be. And there's, for years, people have wanted to do things with this market. So I know that there's interest out there, and I know that there are probably developers in addition to yourselves who would be interested in doing something with that market. And I just, I want to make sure that the market gets the plan that it deserves and the best chance for success. And so I, for me, I'm being repetitive, but I need to know what that long-term lease looks like.
Yeah, and so at least from our perspective, it's a city asset. So I think what we might be able to do is kind of ping pong back and forth, because we also want the city to be able to say, this is what we would want out of a long-term lease. So we felt that at least we wanted to start tonight of, are you guys open to the conversation of developing a lease? And if the answer is yes, great, then we can start moving forward with the specific entities of, you know, who does he have to keep, that sort of thing. But we didn't even know if that would be something that would be on the table for us to come, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Forward with it. So we didn't want to come with terms and say, hey, we're ready for you to sign, if that wasn't even something we could start discussing.
I understand that, but you're down to, a week and a half to your deadline, which is a pretty quick turn to figure out a 10-year lease.
We don't disagree. We don't disagree. And that's, you know, there is another round of funding available in the spring, so I think that's something to consider. And the other thing that I'd like to say is, our purpose in coming here tonight is because we wanted to be completely transparent with you as council, and also the residents of the city. We didn't want to do anything just based on just a single approval, right? So that, this is exactly the conversation we're wanting to have.
I did have a question. Was there any guidance from HCDC in terms of how to include the public in a conversation around a lease? I know this, in some of your materials, you talked about at least one input session. Was that a particular piece of that, or was it the broader vision?
We haven't talked about, so, no, we haven't, we haven't talked to them about that. And honestly, I'm not sure how the public's input would go on that, because, and this is just from covering other municipalities. In my experience, that's been something that the administration and council has worked on, without huge amount of like committee work around it.
That's great clarity. Thank you for sharing that. I have another question, and then I'll get right back out to everybody else. I'll acknowledge Mrs. Hanahan, and then Mr. Thompson. My follow-up to that is, when the documentation here did talk about input, what is your vision so far for that? Would that be coming back to council and sharing, like, what kind of agreement, if the administration works on that, is in place, or is it a step further out when you talked about at least one input session?
I think that that's a step further out, and what that looks like as far as communication back to the city. I think the committees would be I think the committees would be a really great vehicle for that. I do think that having a broader, not everybody wants to come to a committee meeting.
This is true.
So, having, in my experience, having visioning sessions like that in the space or near the space where you're, that you're trying to reactivate is a process that then that information that you gather there comes back to a committee, and how you then use that is determined in a room like this. But the details of how it would look haven't been set in stone.
Thank you, that, I think it's helpful. This hasn't happened before. And so I think the more you can share, like, what is and what isn't versus hoped for, it's just real clear, you're not asking council to deliberate with you over what it could look like. You're saying you're here so that we and the public all know this is an option.
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you. I'm going to play Leslie's role tonight and have a whole list of questions.
Good role.
I would like to start by saying, on your plan, you do have the wrong address. You have a Montgomery Road address, and the address is actually on the auditor site of Mills Avenue dress, address. So that was the first thing I wanted to know. The second thing is, I was stating that the address is incorrect on their proposal. It's not a Montgomery Road address, it's on Mills Avenue. And that could, might cause you issue later.
Thank you.
If you don't use the property address. Also, I'm assuming you, you're going to have a more detailed proposal. We need, you know, I would like to see a whole proposal of the plan, and along with the business plan and the detailed proposal of what you would like to do. I, some of the questions, I was glad to hear the ecological testing. That had been a safety lane for years with leaded gasoline. I know a lot about leaded gasoline, what it does in the atmosphere. It falls, gets in the ground, it doesn't dissipate, it is there forever. And that was one of my biggest concerns when I heard what you wanted to do. So I was glad you did that, or you addressed that one. This is out, and people are asking questions. And in your proposal, you are stating that you're going to have 25 full-time employees and 52 part-time plus customers. This is actually on a one-way residential street. Do you have a proposed plan for parking?
That's a great question. So with this grant proposal, that's an end state, and so it doesn't go into the nitty-gritty, but it, it allows us to describe what our end state would, would look like. So right now, we're estimating that if the building were to be utilized as a market and if Off Pike Market was managing it, those are the job creations that are a potential for this project. So while the details, I, I agree are important, at this stage in the grant proposal, they are not as important in the job creation aspect. So I agree with you, it's a good, it's a good thing that we're going to put in our full proposal and business plan, but we have not gotten that far into the detail yet.
And I think that that's a great example of something that we would work together in partnership with the city.
So this is the pre-application, and that, and you're saying that's not asked for yet?
Yeah, so this is, this is pre-planning work. So this, this tells us kind of what the construction looks like, and it actually develops that sort of plan that says, okay, where's parking? How many windows do you have? How many fire exits? That sort of thing.
Well, for me, parking is number one because it's residential. And we don't want to fill up the other end of Mills Avenue, Walter, which is already, you know, overloaded with cars. But thank you for that. Let me see, I have a couple more.
Mrs. Hanahan, while you're looking for your, your next question, just as a point of clarity, because I have some familiarity with planning grants. I think what is important to acknowledge is there's a step where I think, correct me if I'm wrong, this application is actually just developing the feasibility.
Correct.
It's not actually implementing anything. So your question would be addressed as, as the part of the planning takes place if the pre-application is even going through and they submit it. So just so folks are clear, because sometimes it is hard to figure out, how much do you get to know at what point? So this is planning purposes only.
Well, thank you, Madam President. But I, I would really like to, as soon as you have that before I back, I would like some information on that. The, what liability, if the city holds the grant, what liability does the city have? And what liability does your nonprofit have?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to clarify on what you mean by liability.
If we, if the, you said the city holds the grant? So are we responsible for how the money's spent? If there's a failure, if this fails, who's responsible for that then?
Okay, so fiscal liability is what you're talking about? And so it's, it's a shared partnership, and it's something that we would have to build in our partnership as we define it. So if the city wanted to take liability, that would be written out in our partnership. If Off Pike Market were to take liability, it'd be written in the partnership that we were, would develop if you all are interested in developing.
And I think it's my last question, and if they can't answer it, I would like to ask Mayor Williams. Right now, there are city departments in that building. They've been there 18, 19 years. Will your grant cover the relocation of those departments?
So you, you again are getting into the actual, like, execution of the construction and the details. We're at the stage of pre-planning work. So we are planning what all of that entails. So if the city came to us as a private entity and said, we have departments within that building that need to be relocated, and we're going to need funds in, in order for this partnership to work, that's a cost that Off Pike Market would have to write for or put into our resource bucket to make sure that we're covering.
So, one, just a point of clarity on this, too. So this grant, what we're requesting, the grant as it's written right now is a $100,000 grant. You know, having been on city council, that $100,000 disappears almost immediately. So it is a lot of money. That is a 100-year-old building that needs a considerable amount of work and the environmental studies. So this particular grant is, as Leslie and Jason have said, for pre-planning work. So we, as part of the proposal, it's to develop a plan to relocate anybody that needs to be relocated and to any materials that are, that need to be relocated. There's a lot of storage in there, too. So this is all the, the process of getting the building to a point where it can actually be renovated, getting it dry, getting it secure, getting it to a point where we can say, this is how much money we need to raise, and this is how we're moving forward from there.
Yeah, so you are saying you would help or you would assist, you would try to assist in the costs of relocating these departments?
If that's something the city said they needed, and if, if there were other things in the proposal, like building maintenance or whatever it may be, I think what we're asking for is we have, we see the potential in this building. We've heard that from the community. We're asking administration and council to consider developing a partnership. And we would have to work on defining what that partnership would look like. So these questions are, are great, and I definitely want to hear them again if you all are open to having the conversation of what a partnership between the city and Off Pike Market would look like.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson and then, or, sorry, Mr. Sankar, you have something, then Mr. Thompson?
Yes, real quick. The application, as you said, really is just covering, well, site planning to see, number one, whether it's feasible on the site, architectural and engineering, whether the building is structurally able to secure additional construction on the inside or outside, and the appraisal of the, the place, and then the big one, you know, $25,000 for the environmental study. So this is really just, this grant that you're looking for, it's a preliminary thing to see, hey, can this project even move forward? Because if all of a sudden, one of these things come back as a negative, and it says, hey, it's going to cost you $400,000 to remediate the property, you would say, well, it's pretty, but we'll stay out on the street, you know? Same way with the, you know, the architects and engineering. You know, if, if it's not structurally sound, it's going to take XYZ amount to really secure the building so you can add additional structures on the inside or possibly the outside. You know, you won't know that till this is done. So you can't, till this type of information is secured, you really can't move forward as far as any type of technical details with the city until we know that, yes, this has proven to be viable. It's clean, structurally sound, we can do this with it, and here's our plan, so.
That's exactly right, and it's a, it's, at the end of this grant, the city would know what that building could be used for. I mean, take us out of the equation for a second, us being Off Pike Market. The city knows at the end of this grant, this is what that building and that site is capable of, and this is what it's going to take, and this is what we want to do with it. So we would hope that at the end of this grant process, assuming it were to move forward, we would be good partners with you and vice versa, and we'd want to move forward together and be able to move forward together, but that's not a given. We really don't know. I mean, I think so many of us in this city have 100-year-old houses. We all know, you never know what you're going to find. And that's, that's, that's what we're working from right now.
Mr. Thompson?
One quick question.
There you go.
Hello? Hello?
This grant, does it require matching funds?
Not this one, no. But the hope is that, and this is just me talking from experience, covering things in other places and working with funding organizations, often a grant like this is the start of getting much more funding. Once you get a grant like this, other funding organizations and other businesses are willing to chip in. If you look at redevelopment across the Cincinnati region, including our neighbors like in Walnut Hills, East Walnut Hills, that's, that's how they're doing it. They get federal dollars or, you know, a local grant like this, or they do some crowdsourcing, and then other money comes in. And that's, again, why this is, it's really just the first step in whatever that property is. And, and as I said, when I asked, you know, what we were asking for tonight is if you don't want to move forward with us right at this particular moment, think about putting out an RFP, because in doing our research for this property and our own business plan, we've gotten a lot of, like, a lot of interest and encouragement from people in the region who want to see development happen in Norwood. That they see, they see things happening already and they want to help. There are people that would be interested in helping.
Mr. Brayden? I'm sorry, Mr., you have a follow-up, Mr. Thompson? Okay, then Mr. Brayden.
Sorry. Just that, since, since this is shaping up to be a, we, we've talked about this in my committee up until now, as of course, but this is now really transitioning to an economic development process, I would love to see, as this moves forward, to actually engage in the Economic Development Committee, that might be the place. I know we said that, that committee meetings, not everybody likes to talk in, but it's, it is a little, I mean, you've been to the committee meetings, we're generally pretty open. It's generally kind of free-form, and people can talk and throw out ideas, and, and I, I think that as, as we move forward, that could be a really good place to get community involvement.
Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I, I could see a lot of questions coming out of this meeting. I've got 20 of them written down here. I think the Economic Development Committee, or the committee of the whole, might be a good place to start versus all these questions being come out tonight. So do we need a motion for this to be placed into the Economic Development Committee?
I think if there were a general consensus that this council wanted to be supportive of the pre-application process, then it would make sense to put this into a committee. But if we as a body are not in agreement around being supportive, then I don't think it would make sense to ask them to come to a committee meeting. So that's my point of view as chair of that committee, which you would be welcome to come to should this project move forward. I recognize two hands out there. I'll take these two comments. Okay, I know this is an important conversation, so I just want to go back to how we amended the agenda. We will be taking a break. Mr. Brayden, if you have a follow-up, we'll have that, and then Mr. Sankar, Mr. Bonsall, and Mrs. Hanahan.
Yeah, see, that's, that's what I was, thank you, Madam President.
Sure.
So, yeah, we all have questions. So we, I'm sure we're all going to support $100,000 grant money to, to sink into one of our structures. However, the partnership is, is where all the questions are going to come in. Who are we partnering with, and the intentions and the details? So when those questions are answered, until those questions are answered, it's going to be hard to, to support a partnership. So to, to be placed in the committee, I think this is what, where we need to go with this. So either Economic Development or Committee of the Whole, either one is okay with me, but one of those should be a motion on the floor, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. I, I think it was Mr. Sankar, Mr. Bonsall, and then Mrs. Hanahan.
Madam President, I just, I know the, the mayor's been involved in this, but he hadn't really had anything to say on this as yet, but I didn't know if you had a comment on your meeting with him and what your thoughts on the project?
Mr. Mayor?
I can't tell you, I, I believe that this is a critical issue. I believe this city is changing, and it's changing quickly. And I think this is the type of project that will move this city forward. We, we accomplished two things. We have a changing community, and we have people coming in. Talented people sitting all over here that have worked hard to improve this community, mostly through volunteers. And I, and I really believe this will help the community. Mrs. Hanahan, very, very poignant question when she asked about parking. Going back years ago, we, we had restrictions on parking, on zoning. In other words, if you had a business, you were required to have so much parking. It stymied business. So through the planning commission and other issues, they decided to take the parking away, take the restrictions away, and it improved things. And I guess what I'm trying to say is that the more we stand in the way, the more we block it. You know, if you've got these private citizens out here with the ability, the technical now, the education, and the dedication to get it done, I think it'll probably long after I'm gone, but I would love to see that happen. It would take this city back. It would give something that, that we're sorely missing. We've got a lot of commercial, now we don't have that, oh, that hands-on feeling, I know you, and I, I'm going to sell fruit, and I'm going to sell this. That's exactly what we need. And, you know, and as far as parking goes, if you want them to park, they want to come there, they'll figure it out. Kind of, sometimes it's hard. Sometimes it's a cliche that if you, if you make it hard to get there, there must be something there I'm missing. So I'm going to go out of my way, I'm going to inconvenience the heck out of myself so I can find out and be a part of it. Is there a lot of questions? Yes. But I think it bears moving as quickly as possible, so it doesn't die. That's what happened. Good ideas sometimes just die, and this city needs this. And, and you mentioned about people in that, that, that building. That building is so underutilized, and I'm sure this city can adapt to move very few people somewhere. I mean, if you look at the good of the neighborhood, the good of the city, then sometimes you've got to make a sacrifice. And if it don't cost you anything, what the hell difference it made? But I mean, you see what I'm saying? This is an opportunity that I, I really sincerely pray that it doesn't die, that we just don't walk away from it and get discouraged by it. If you want to put it in economic development, that's a good idea. Put it there, but move with it. Move with it. Don't let it die, because if you stall it too long, let me be real candid, if you stall it too long, elections will be over and promise will be forgotten. Don't let it die. And I thank you for all your work and effort, and the rest of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bonsall?
Thank you, Madam President, or Madam President, for ten. So I've got a statement and then like three questions and then some other concerns. So I've been holding it together, holding it here.
Okay.
So it was my time. So first, I want to thank you all for coming. Off Pike Market, I think is, I've been, every one of them I've been in town for, and it's been a wonderful experience. A lot of great vendors, and many of our neighbors are vendors as well, so like, it's really nice to be able to, to see them there. I definitely agree with the mayor, I'm not worried about the parking.
Could you scoot closer to your mic?
I agree with the mayor, I'm not worried about the parking. You know, street parking, it's public property, I mean, this is, this is a huge public benefit. And the zoning in much of that area, too, is R3. And the zoning in much of that area, too, is R3 anyways, so it's, I mean, the area's zoned for like multifamily residential, so, I mean, the parking doesn't really bother me all that much there. So, just a couple of questions, though. So, from my understanding, the county has like two different ways they divvy up the community development block grants. One of them is to actually, like, each city gets like a set amount that they can use on projects that kind of qualify, and the other one is actual competitive grants that cities all over can apply, or municipalities all over can apply for, but no municipality is actually guaranteed that money. I'm thinking that this is that latter one. Okay, so the city's not like giving us potential, like a street repaving project or something else?
No. This is a competitive grant, so we're talking about this moving forward. I mean, it's very possible we could fill out our application on August 23rd and not get this. But, I mean, we're committed to doing those markets next year, and we do believe that there will be other funding opportunities coming. We know there will be another one in the spring, another round, for instance. So, if we didn't get this one, if we were in partnership, we would be willing to continue this process.
And then, a follow-up question. So, if you all applied for it, and let's say that you didn't get the lease by mid-September or the end of October, whatever date that you need to for it to actually really help them for this round, does that hurt you in applying in the spring, like because you all had a rejected application now? Is there any negative ramifications?
So, we don't think so. But I've got a request out to talk more about that, but we don't think so. We didn't get that sense.
Okay, great. And then, so, let's just say that you all get the grant, you all move forward, and you have all this planning stuff that happened, and then you all don't end up actually doing the full project. So, what benefits to the city do we have from the work that you all are doing right now when it comes to the market building?
So, let's say worst-case scenario comes back, and the environmental study says it's, you should not be serving food in that market, right? You should, or in that building. We would definitely have to change our plans. That is, that would be a big blow for Off Pike Market's vision, for sure. But, at the end of that process, the city, Norwood, and its residents would know that that building cannot be used for food, for instance, and they would know that the building is going to cost this much to renovate, and it's only good for X, Y, Z uses, given the environmental study. And so, that it would, you would now have a city asset that, part of this is getting it dry and secure, right? A city asset that is dry and secure, that you have architectural renderings and renovation estimates for, and you know what it's good for, and you all would know how to, you would have the information you needed to move forward from there. I think that would spark a lot of conversations from Off Pike Market's end of things, but from a city perspective, you would have a lot of information that you don't know now.
Final question, Mr. Bonzal?
It is not my final question.
Can you make this your final question? You said you had three.
Okay. Okay. So, that's fine. So, at this point, it sounds, okay, so at this point, it sounds like everything that you all are doing is going to be public record, I'm guessing, so it'll be essentially the documents that come out of this planning grant or whatever, it's going to be things that people can review. It won't just be...
So, I'm hesitating only because as a journalist, I'm very aware of public record laws, and I just don't know for sure whether all of these things are technically public record. However, I can tell you that our intention from the Off Pike Market Board is that this be a transparent process, and a process that invites feedback from residents and from stakeholders. We wouldn't be here otherwise.
Okay, and then, so...
Mr. Bonzal, I'm going to ask you to hold that for...
No, I said that I was going to say a few concerns, too, when I originally started talking.
Okay. Is it feasible that you could communicate via email with the market around that?
I'd like for the public to hear what I think on this specific thing. It'll be less than a minute, so...
Go, I'm watching the clock.
Sure, great, thank you. So, I definitely support the idea of a market being there. I think it's a great, great thing. I mean, the actual grant itself, I think, is totally fine. I mean, I don't see any reason why there would not be support just to at least apply for the grant. When it comes to the full lease, though, I do think, I do have some concerns because to commit a 10-year lease when there's not, like, a funding source is yet identified for the full project, and then we don't know what performance guarantees. So, it could be that we give a lease to you all, and there's a lot of struggles, and no market ever actually ends up happening, maybe just like one a year, and maybe that's less than what we would want to see as council if we were to sign it over for 10 years. So, I would just encourage you all to think about some reasonable performance guarantees. I think us as council should do that as well, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to respectfully disagree with Mayor Williams. You are talking, you're talking 27 full-time employees, 52 part-time, people who are coming to visit. You're talking about hundreds of extra cars in the neighborhood. And if you live on Mills Avenue, it is going to affect you. They're already fighting for parking spaces. So, I think the parking is a major issue that needs to be looked at, and in their plan, or I'm sure they have a much more detailed business plan or proposal, before I can support it, I would like to at least see where you're going with that. My other issue, what I'm going to disagree with you on, is the department that's in that building. They are vital to this city, and it will cost tens of thousands of dollars and possibly paying rent somewhere for them to be moved. And since this is taxpayer expenses, you know, I think this is, that is the most important question there is, is where will that, how will we work with those people, those departments?
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. I'm going to ask that we revisit a statement that Mr. Brayden made in just a moment. I want to ask both Jason and Hillary, it looks as though, when you started and in the documentation, administration is willing to partner with you. And your visit here today was to find out if council would be supportive of that as well?
Yes, because we want to be transparent with the public. We believe very strongly that this is, for all the reasons Mrs. Hanahan says, this is a big project. And even though this is just for pre-planning, this is a major issue, that even though we have the support of administration and we felt like we could move forward with that, we wanted to come here, be transparent with the council and with the community, and make sure that we have support. I don't, I personally, and I don't think, and I believe the board agrees with me, do not think that this project works without this kind of transparency and feedback and two-way streets. It's meant to be a community space, and we can't do that without the community.
Thank you.
And if I could just address one thing, this is not a parking plan by any means, but just to your point about parking, I don't disagree with you. I will say, though, that I think part of that parking plan, and one of the things that we're most proud of with Off Pike Market, is that many of our vendors and our shoppers come from that neighborhood. So, we have a lot of shoppers, and we have vendors, actually. We had several vendors at the last market walk their products or take them down by wagon from Mills. So, I do think that some of those parking concerns will be alleviated because the people shopping at Off Pike, not all by any means, and it's still a major concern, but there are people that are going to be walking to it.
Thank you. So, Mr. Brayden previously made a motion. Is that a motion that you'd like to still have entertained?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Madam President, pro temp. Maybe a motion to place this issue in the Economic Development Committee?
Second by Mr. Thompson. Discussion around that. Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, the application, I believe, has to be filed by August 23rd. I don't see any detriment for filing that application on behalf of the committee and the city. The funding, as was stated, in this type of community block grant funding, is not going to take away from any other of our community block grant funding requests that we have over X amount of years. So, I think, I don't see any detriment to having the application filled out. You're not guaranteed it's going to happen, I bet you're going to get it, but by putting it in committee, I don't think that we get it in and out of the committee before the filing date for the application. Even if they would receive the funding, and we find out it isn't a real good fit for the city, then we don't have to move forward with long-term lease or any of that down the road. As was stated, this is preliminary request for funding to basically do a feasibility study on this type of project. So, I would, I'll vote against putting it in committee just because I feel there's no downfall to filing the application at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other discussion?
I have some thoughts. First, I am deeply grateful that you are interested in a public-private partnership with the city. I'm remembering that almost a year ago, we started talking about that, and I'm delighted to see there's been sustained momentum, so, thank you. It's not just pie in the sky anymore. Secondly, as it relates to the motion, Mr. Sankar, I think having the motion to put it in committee could be helpful, not to report out from committee any support around the application. I agree with you, the application could move forward. I personally support it. I understand it's a planning grant, and I also understand that you don't need council's permission. You actually have the administration's permission to move forward, and I think it was prudent and very helpful in building trust in what could be a public-private partnership for you to come. So, I just want to make sure that is completely clear. Council does not need to okay the moving forward of this application. I think putting it in committee at this juncture, though, ensures that this ongoing conversation has a home that is not this regular meeting. I see lots of heads in the back and hand signals like wrap it up, and the reason I've allowed the conversation to go as long as it has is because this is critical. It's in the middle of our city, and if you have not been listening, it is super important to Off Pike Market that everybody be involved. So, I would ask you, Mr. Sankar, to reconsider putting it in committee, knowing that this plan can move forward. It already has administrative approval, and any further questions or comments could be discussed at Economic Development and Community Engagement Committee. Any other discussion? Mr. Brayden?
Thank you. I'll be quick. Didn't I hear, didn't I hear a comment that they need a partnership in order to get that grant? I thought I heard that.
So, you did, Mr. Brayden. So, when we asked to be on this agenda, we didn't know this, but in, since being added to the agenda, we've had a chance to talk with HCDC about the strength and weaknesses of our proposal as it stands now. It's part of their application process. And one of the things that they told us is that there is a high likelihood that this particular proposal, as it stands right now, without a long-term lease, would not be approved. However, they were encouraging to us to think about future funding cycles. So, Mrs. Stevenson is right on. I mean, we could have moved forward with just administrative approval on this, and we can go ahead and apply without that lease, and we apply, and, you know, we probably get turned down, but maybe not, you never know. Stranger things have happened. But, we can continue working on other proposals moving forward. As I said at the outset, what we've heard as we've done our research on this is a lot of encouragement from people both inside Norwood and outside Norwood. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you. In May of next year, there is a $40,000 planning grant available, and the deadline for that would be in May.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other discussion? Just for the record, is, can you, who in the city are you working with when you say working with the city on the lease? If that...
Did I say that?
No, no, no. You, the conversation at hand, if there's going to be a short-term lease, even a long-term lease, that has to be worked out with the city. Who at the city?
That's all for you guys to decide. We're willing to work with whoever would have authority over that.
Okay. So, there hasn't been a direct ask to anyone at this?
No, there has not.
We've been working on our end, thinking about what might make sense for us, but we've not had any direct conversations with the city about a lease, one way or the other.
Okay. Thank you. That's a great point of clarity. So, I just want to recap, and then I think we're going to consider the motion on the floor. Your ask tonight was whether or not we'd be supportive. You've made us aware that your grant application would be stronger if you had a lease agreement with the city. Presently, you're not discussing with the city, anyone at the city administration, the details of a lease, and that is not something we as a body would be doing tonight. So, just so that we're clear on that. So, the motion on the floor is to put the Off Pike planning application process into the committee, Economic Development, Community Engagement. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
At this time, the agenda calls for the American Heart Association to recognize Norwood Fire Department. If you would, please tell us who you are.
So, good evening, everybody. My name is Amy Graham. I'm with the American Heart Association, and today we want to recognize the Norwood Fire Department for their care of patients in this area that they cover for heart attack care. So, the American Heart Association, it brings every attempt to bring our evidence-based medicine to the hospitals and EMS agencies in the community that take care of patients. We do this with EMS agencies by our Mission Lifeline EMS program, and by doing so with EMS agencies, we focus on patients that are having heart attacks. So, what our fire department and EMS agencies are measured on is how they identify a patient that is having a heart attack with patients that are 35 years and older. Once they identify that patient is having heart attack symptoms, they're doing an EKG in 10 minutes or less when they arrive at the patient's side. After that, they're transmitting that to the hospital. So, the hospital gets pre-notification that, look, we have a patient out in the field that we think is in a compromised state. This sends off a chain of events at the hospital to where the services that patient needs once they arrive with the EMS agency are already there and activated, to actually get those things quicker to the patient, to where it has a better outcome for that patient, whether it be their heart for a heart attack or their brain if they're having a stroke. So, with these measures, and then also when it comes to heart attack care, they are able, because of their actions, that patient is getting to the cath lab, to where that patient gets that artery open in 60 minutes or, and, I'm sorry, 90 minutes or less. So, what, in all of these measures, Norwood Fire Department exceeded all of our benchmarks, and actually, this is, they're receiving the Silver Award, so that means for the whole year of 2018, again, they overexceeded our benchmarks for those measures, and they are nationally recognized. In Ohio, there's only 63 EMS agencies that have received this award, and I think there's over like 1,500 fire, park, fire EMS agencies in the state of Ohio. And then nationally, there's only been 623 awards that have been given out. So, this is definitely something to be recognized and celebrated, and acknowledge all the quality improvement and the education and the training that your fire EMS agency providers have to go through. And then also, they receive the Plus Award, and what that means is, is that usually what happens is the patient, if they go to, say, in their area, it would be a patient that would go to Rookwood and would have to be transferred to another hospital that has a cath lab. So, because of their quality improvement and what they know to do, they also get that patient to the hospital as quick as they can. If that patient needs to be transferred, they transfer that patient to the next hospital in less than 120 minutes. And so, they have a second recognition for that. Besides working at the American Heart Association, I also work at Mercy Rookwood, and I've personally been on an ambulance with some of the Norwood Fire Department members with their paramedics and have taken a patient from Rookwood over to Jewish that was having a heart attack, and they were amazing. I mean, these guys, you guys are very fortunate to have the fire department that trains and has that much focus on quality improvement. Like I said, there's not very many agencies in the southwest Ohio region that have received this. So, this is something to definitely be celebrated in your community and really highlighted. So, I just want to say congratulations on your Silver Plus Award for 2019, and we look forward to being back here again for their Gold Award next year.
Yeah, we do train a lot... Yeah, we, we do train a lot. We do a lot with the Mercy Group. So, we, we're very appreciative of this recognition. Also, want to just thank all the crews that make the runs every day and Dean Feeney for signing, signing us up and doing all the backend stuff for us, so they can capture all this data. So, thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda are the requests to address council on agenda items. Is Corey Bogdan here? If you'll come on up, give us your name again and address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is Corey Bogdan. I live at 1942 Hopkins Avenue. Been a resident of Norwood for about 18 years, homeowner for somewhere around 13 or 14. And I own a 100-year-old structure, so I'm very familiar with its eccentricities. I've also been a, one of the vendors at, for multiple years, at what used to be the Norwood Farmers Market. And I've been a vendor with the Off Pike Market since its inception. And I am very, very excited at its growth. When I was, at the Farmers Market, there were days where there were like six or seven vendors. Now that there's 27 this weekend, that is fantastic growth. And US City Council should be very eager to latch on to that sort of growth. As I look at neighbors around us, neighborhoods around us that have been revitalized, Over the Rhine, Pleasant Ridge, it's all done through small businesses, primarily focused on food, independent restaurants, and local arts and local culture. Go down to Vine Street on Over the Rhine, it's all independent restaurants and local artists and local culture. Drive right up the road to Pleasant Ridge, all new independent restaurants and a lot of storefronts that focus on arts and culture. Norwood is missing that. And I completely agree with the mayor that this is something that the city absolutely needs. And as both a resident and a vendor, in fact, remove me as a vendor, as a resident, I want to see this happen in Norwood. I love the passion that they bring, the determination and grit that they bring. This is something that you, as city council, should be latching on to. I would very, very much like to see the city council not use your expertise, because there's a lot of expertise that I'm hearing from your questions, use your expertise to act as facilitators and problem solvers to help them grow this community instead of acting as obstacles. Now, it's very easy to get bogged down in all kinds of minutia. A lot of questions come up. But act as problem-solving partners and facilitators of growth as a city council instead of an obstacle. And to the mayor's point of figuring it out, look at the Oakley Market before they moved over to Mad Tree. That, Oakley Square is not riddled with parking spots, but hundreds of people came and hundreds of people figured it out. So, I encourage you to work with Off Pike Market. If this grant goes down, you know, this application, continue to work with them. Continue to act as facilitators and problem solvers. Give Norwood what it needs and help it grow like so many of the neighborhoods around us. Thank you. Oh, and if you haven't been to one of the Off Pike Markets, please come this weekend. It would be really cool to see you. And it's only going to be like 92 degrees, which is cooler than the last one. Even, the last two have been really, really beset by some foul weather. We had rain and then, you know, near 97, 98 degrees, and people still came. And the vendors are coming back and people are coming back. It's a wonderful growth opportunity that I've seen in the trenches, and we'd love to see your support.
I've had a chance to actually purchase some of Mr. Bogdan's products. It's on my dining room table. He makes these cute little candle holders, and you can also probably get your candles there, too. Thank you for those remarks. Next on the agenda are the reports of standing committees of council, finance, budget, and audit.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. So, to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Finance, Budget, and Audit Committee, to whom is referred city finances, beg to submit the following report. The city auditor provided information on how the $3 million overage in the sewer fund happened. Finance Committee would like to see written procedures from the Water Department. Finance Committee will also be following up with department heads to track progress to the completion of recommendations in the state's report on accounting methods. Respectfully submitted, James Bonzal, Leslie Stevenson, John Brayden.
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Madam President. Pro tem, motion to accept the committee report filed.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. If it's okay with the chair, I'd love to invite Mr. Stith to talk further about the sewer fund and what was discovered.
Mr. Stith.
Thank you, Madam President. Pro tem. We talked about the fact that the Water Department on a monthly basis fills out reports, informs, and submits them to the Metropolitan Sewer District that then calculates the amount of the sewer bill. And then that's forwarded to the waterworks, I shouldn't say waterworks, that actually sends the bill. For some time, really since 2014, there has been a decline in revenue in the water fund while there's an excess revenue in the sewer fund. This is something that we had looked at, that we had the Auditor of State look at and examine. And around the 15th of July, the fiscal emergency supervisor from the Auditor of State went down and talked to the Water Department about the way that the billing is processed and discovered that since 2014, a 7% reduction to the amount of the sewer bill has not been credited properly to each fund. They then sent an email to the Safety Service Director, Mr. Gears and I, on the 16th of July detailing the amounts and the total amount of money that should have been going into the water fund that was going into the sewer fund. So, there's a form that's filled out every month, and an example here is the June bill. And it showed that the total amount billed for the sewer fund was $528,000 and change. It then says less 7%, which is $36,978. And then the amount due to the Metropolitan Sewer District's $491,000. Prior to 2014, it appears that that 7% was reflected on the way the Water Department wrote its deposit slips for the treasurer and the auditor. In other words, the deposit slip for the sewer fund would not be $528,000, it would be $491,000. And then the water fund would have $36,978 credited to it. There was a personnel change about that time. This is a few people ago, meaning that the, the current staff filling it out weren't the ones here in 2014. Looking back and looking through all of the reports that have been able to be obtained through the Auditor of State for the sewer and water funds, it shows that from 2014 through May of 2019, the city's been able to keep $2,359,043, which is an average of $430,500 per year. So, we made adjustments to those funds as approved by our outside audit team. Our audit team, when we talk about them, that's an outside company that comes in and does our audit every year. If they had found this, they would have just said, in the audit, make these adjustments. So, it's not transfer of funds. It is just a correction to the way that the, the way that they are deposited into each one of those funds. So, doing that, we ended up with, at the end of July, the water fund has an unencumbered balance of $1,729,718. And the sewer fund has an unencumbered balance of $1,199,034. The total amounts going from, as I read this email, from the state auditor, as I said, it looks like it's about $430,500 a year. Now, what does all that money mean? Where's that 7% come from? Why do we get to keep it instead of sending it on to the Metropolitan Sewer District? The City of Norwood collects money from its citizens as part of the water bill to, for the Metropolitan Sewer District. The Sewer District then essentially pays us to do their mailing, to print their bills, to run the computer software that tracks it, to pay the personnel to be in charge of that, 7% of the money that's collected. But instead of paying us and sending us a check, they just deduct that amount from the sewer bill. So, what should be happening is as that money comes in for the sewer fund, 7% of it should go to the water fund, which is where all of the expenditures for the management fees for the office that actually runs the billing department for the sewers is. So, that's what the sewer, the Metropolitan Sewer District gives us to be able to process those bills. So, now we've made those corrections. And again, it's not a transfer. From an accounting standpoint, the outside accounting has just said you make this as adjustments, you do put all the documentation together. And so, we've gone back through 2014 and have the total amounts of that 7% that was reported to the Metropolitan Sewer District for each month transferred that total over. Now, the sheet that has this with the breakdown on it, where it shows the 7%, up until now is some, not something that has been shared with the auditor's office or the treasurer's office. It's a process problem. And from now on, we've addressed this process and it is information that is shared with us, and that we can make sure that those amounts that are being deducted actually end up going into the correct fund. For this reason, we do not need the resolution that was asked for at the last council meeting for a transfer, because we don't have to request a transfer, because this has been corrected and approved by our outside audit team and the auditor's.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Any other discussion? Mrs. Handerhand.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm the bad guy tonight, and that's okay. I watched the finance committee meeting tonight, where there was, where this was discussed, and several council members expressed their delight over this fund. This is not a congratulatory moment. Ever since I've been on council, the excess in this fund has been questioned. I've been asked, you've been asked, nobody came up with an answer. Several times, I heard that this, heard that the city was hiding money. And I'm sure most of you have heard the same thing. I haven't done enough investigating to figure out if and how this would have affected the general fund. It may not have at all, I'm not sure. This isn't a happy moment, because this has taken five years to figure out. And this council, the past council, the administration has been suspect to this. So, I would just like, this is really sad, that five years later, we're finally getting an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Handerhand. Any other discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. Pro tem. I don't think anybody at the meeting was expressing like just absolute delight into, oh, my gosh, we now have money. I think a lot of us were relieved that the answer was finally here. And I do agree, yes, you and I have both been asking about this even before, or essentially right after we got elected. So, again, I don't know where the celebration necessarily was coming from. I think, but I think there was satisfaction in knowing that the answer is solved. And there is frustration, as I noted at the meeting. And I'm gonna see if the chair wants to recognize the mayor on this specific issue. There, there is frustration, at least from my part, that it took so long, because we have been asking questions to various people, including the person that's over that department. So, we never did get an answer, but anyways. So, I would love to see, I know that the mayor had some comments before. If the chair would like to recognize the mayor, I would be interested to hear what he has to say on this specific topic.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to comment?
Sure. No, I'm glad to comment. I can tell you when this all happened, it happened one day that we were all sitting in there, the financial supervisor, April Davis, Anna Mary, Donna Lake, and myself. And the question over the years was, how's come there so much money in, in the metropolitan, you know, in the sewer district? And the state had somebody come in and do an audit, and they couldn't figure it out. So, as far as that goes, the, the administration is not the audit function of this city. So, the discussion went on, what's the problem? So, April and Anna Mary went down and walked into the, the Water Department and said to her, said to Sally, here's what's going on. She said, here. Handled her their form. They brought the form up and they said, there it is. There it is. Now, Joe's not an auditor, I'm not an auditor. It doesn't, I don't know what it comes under the auditors, I don't know who it comes under. That's not the idea. The idea that it had been going on for years. And it was all kinds of, I think George Snyder was the one of the ones that first raised the question years ago. Nobody knew the answer. I'm not an accountant. Joe's not an accountant. And so, when all this fiscal emergency came down and they was looking for it, they simply went down and asked her. And she said, here it is. Now, it don't make any difference. You know, as long as, you understand, it just happened. We'll never get rid of conspiracies in this town. They'll be here as long as, as I've ever been. But, did it happen? Yes. But that's how it happened. That's exactly the day it happened, because we were sitting in there having a meeting, and April and Anna Mary went down and asked her. And she said, here. Now, apparently, when they did the audit before, they had, person, they didn't ask her. They was looking at bills and calculations of water and calculations of sewer, and what it was based on, the summertime rate, the wintertime rate. They just simply went down and said to Sally, how does, what, how do you explain it? How's it billed? And she said, here. And handed her the invoice slip. That's how it happened. It's as simple as that. I, I know it doesn't make people, it don't make me happy. But that's how it happened. Because it was that, one of those things, it was that, you know, grassy knoll, you know, who, who did what? It was right there. But nobody, I think sometimes, people look to make things more difficult than what they really are. And April Davis and Anna Mary walked down and said, walked in and said to Sally, how's this work? They came back up and they said, we got it. It wasn't 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bonzal, and then Mr. Thompson.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make, so, it was mentioned that the administration does not audit, so almost like the administration's not responsible. But, the administration is responsible for the performance of the department, the policies and procedures, and the training of the employees. And so, that is where the breakdown was. It was the, it was there. So, I'm glad to hear how we found it. But I mean, that's, you know, to say that Joe's not responsible at all, that's false, because those are his employees and those are his, it's his department. So, anyways, I'm not looking to go back and blame, but if somebody's gonna try to divert it and say that it's the auditor's fault for not catching this specific thing, you know, I would ultimately go back to the person that's in charge of the department, and that's Joe. But, again, it doesn't matter at this point, we're just gonna move forward, but, and I don't think it's right to blame the auditors.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I didn't blame the auditor. I said, I don't know who to blame. I said, Joe's not an auditor. I mean, let's face it, Joe's hurt some feelings. He come up here, you didn't like, somebody didn't like what he said, they got their feelings hurt, they come up here, you voted the resolution against him. I mean...
Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure we stay on track here. Mr. Thompson, you have the floor.
I'm glad we found what was wrong. I think my mic's not working again. It, you know, honestly, Mr. Bonzal pretty much stated what I was gonna say. I mean, it was a 15-minute conversation. All somebody had to do was go ask, hey, why is this? Seems odd it took five years.
Can you speak up, please?
As everybody said, we've, we've been asking about this for quite some time. So, I'm glad it was resolved. I'm glad we don't have to pass a resolution to move this money, because I wasn't gonna do it. But, this, this is just simple, inner-office communications. It should be pretty easy to handle. You shouldn't have to hire outside auditors to go ask your employees, why, why is this... You shouldn't have to hire outside auditors to go ask your employees, why, why is this number wrong, when they can just hand you a piece of paper and do it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Sankar, and then Mr. Brayden.
Well, I mean, what you're saying is fine, but I would think since 2014, if there's such an imbalance in the funds, that someone from the auditor's office would go in and audit, not just the numbers, but the forms, to see where this is, to see if there is something within that department. Over, since 2014, it was never audited, as far as looking at that stuff, asking about the procedures, what do you do with this stuff here? How could this be like that? If that question would have been asked over these years, the answer would have been gotten far before now.
I still don't think it's necessarily the auditor's job.
Mr. Thompson, I'm gonna ask you, hold that comment. Mr. Brayden is next.
Thank you, Madam President. Pro temp. So am I missing something here? I understand, I mean, it's, you know, the head of the department probably should have called that. The money's there, right? The money's there, right? It's not, it's not missing, you're not gonna stop people from conspiracies, you're not gonna stop people from hating us, the government, the money's there, it wasn't stolen, it's there. So to me, it's a simple mistake, let's move on. We found it.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Thompson?
No further comments.
Any other discussion regarding the Finance Budget and Audit Report? Okay, motion on the floor is to receive and file the report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yep.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all, the motion passes. We are on to the third reading of ordinances and resolutions, with the first being the Ordinance Amending Section 1305.05, Fees of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Norwood, Ohio, to waive certain fees for handicap accessible ramps. Mr. Thompson.
I will move we have the third reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Any discussion? Have the third read, oh wait, so sorry, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All right, motion passes, please have the third reading.
An ordinance amending Section 1305.05, Fees of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Norwood, Ohio, to waive certain fees for handicap accessible ramps.
Mr. Thompson.
I will move we pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all, the motion passes. There are no longer any second readings of ordinances or resolutions, so we will move on to the introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions, the first being ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Mr. Brayden seconds that motion. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So the urgency to have all three readings today is just that the Police Department has been waiting for, there's a, there's some stuff that they need to get done, and so this appropriations ordinance helps them to get that done.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Any other discussion? Okay, the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules and have all three readings. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
Please have the reading.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
Due to the amendment to the agenda that took place earlier, we will now have a communication from the Service Safety Director regarding Highland Avenue on the agenda.
Dear Mrs. Lake and Members of Council, I have enclosed a breakdown in cost to repave Highland Avenue from Ash Street to the Cincinnati Corporation Line. As you will see, the total project is six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The outside funding is as follows. One hundred and twenty thousand dollars from MRF grant, three hundred thousand dollars from CDBG grant, and two hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the city. To put it simply, the city will get six hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of roadwork done for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This must be done in 2019, or the city will lose the four hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant money. I am requesting that council give authority to advertise for bids and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder. Sincerely, Joseph Seegerz, Director, Public Service Safety.
Mr. Brayden.
Requested letter being received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Any discussion? I just want to clarify, MRF refers to the Municipal Road Fund, and CDBG refers to the Community Development Block Grant. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
The motion passes, thank you all. The next item on the agenda is the second ordinance under introductory readings, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Norwood and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners relative to the improvement of Highland Avenue and declaring an emergency.
I'd recommend we have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
Motion passes. Please have the reading.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Norwood and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners relative to the improvement of Highland Avenue and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Norwood and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners relative to the improvement of Highland Avenue and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Norwood and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners relative to the improvement of Ha, of Highland Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, pro temp, I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? So I do want to share, just so that the public is fully aware, that this is a project that's got several funding streams. Um, the city did make an application to receive some of the municipal funds, so that was part of the process, and so this agreement is really just to execute on the project. So repaving and the like is what will take place on that part of Highland Avenue. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all, the motion passes. Next on the agenda is the third ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Highland Avenue repaving from Ash Street to the Cincinnati Corporation Line within the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Thompson.
I would move we have all three readings.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
The motion carries, please have the readings.
Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Highland Avenue repaving from Ash Street to the Cincinnati Corporation Line within the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Highland Avenue repaving from Ash Street to the Cincinnati Corporation Line within the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Highland Avenue repaving from Ash Street to the Cincinnati Corporation Line within the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Any discussion? Mr. Sankar.
Mr. Madam President, just a note that this project has to be completed by the end of this year in order for us to take advantage of this funding. If, if there's no way after getting the bids that we can complete it by the end of this year, the funding goes away.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Sankar. We did previously ask the county for three hundred thousand dollars for street improvements, and that's part of the funding mechanism, so that is a great acknowledgement. This is a project for this specific time period. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all, everyone, the motion passes. At this time, we will have, based on the amendment...
You understand?
Oh yes, the fourth ordinance, we need salt. Um, the ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of two thousand tons, more or less, of salt at a bulk rate and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I recommend we have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
Please have the readings.
Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of two thousand tons, more or less, of salt at a bulk rate and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of two thousand tons, more or less, of salt at a bulk rate and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of two thousand tons, more or less, of salt at a bulk rate and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sankar.
I recommend the ordinance be passed, please.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all, the motion carries. And thank you, Clerk of Council, for that reminder. So at this time, we are going to entertain the other request to address council. These are placed up here, I think by you, Mr. Bonzal, like this, so this would have been the last to arrive, on top.
I'm guessing so.
I guess so too. So I'm just gonna reorder them so we actually go in the order they were received, because I truly think that is what happens. Is Linda Sodaro, Sodaro? Sodaro here to speak about the water system? If you would give us your name again and your address, and then you'll have five minutes to address council. Thank you for your patience.
My name is Linda, my name is Linda Sodaro. I live at 2516 Sheridan Drive. Mr. Mayor, Madam President, pro temp, and Members of Council, I want to thank you for listening to the concerns that residents have about the water system. And I especially want to thank Councilwoman Hanahan for contacting the EPA, and Councilman Bonzal for getting the hundred and fifty pages of documents that gave us some clarity on the situation. Unfortunately, I'm a native of Charleston, West Virginia, so this is not my first water crisis. And it's the worst kind of deja vu to be standing up here in front of politicians expressing outrage at what has happened. It's, it's really, it's actually quite surreal. The January 2014 chemical spill into the water supply of three hundred thousand West Virginians over a non-county area. It was integral in my decision to leave West Virginia. I'm a seventh-generation West Virginian, and I just couldn't take it anymore. The governmental response to it was quite cavalier, and this honestly is starting to feel like it's happening again. So, living in Norwood for the past three years, I, along with everybody who uses water in Norwood, is a stakeholder in the safety of this water system. We're in this together, water connects us. When I first saw the tanks on Indian Mountain Avenue, when I first moved here, I didn't even entertain the idea that those water tanks were in use. Just didn't seem possible. Had I known about this situation when I was house hunting in 2016, I wouldn't even look at a house in Norwood. And I think that that needs to be considered as far as the real estate market goes. I find it deeply disturbing that I just didn't, wasn't able to make an informed decision. The inaction and lack of communication to citizens demonstrates an epic failure in the ability of this administration to run this water system. Residents should not have learned about this from the newspaper and Facebook. And there are still people who don't know. I talked to my neighbors about it, they have a one-year-old baby, they had no idea, they didn't know what I was talking about. And this was day before yesterday. So how was it deemed acceptable to ignore and remain silent about the 2014 recommendations of Dixon Engineering jeopardizing the safety of the water for more than nineteen thousand people? Why has there been no maintenance on these tanks? They're a hundred and twenty-two years old since 1979? Fishing out dead animals doesn't constitute maintenance. Why haven't we heard from the Norwood Health Department? The quality of the water determines the health of the community. In my previous experience, the local health department was among the first on the scene providing information, and most importantly, telling us the truth about what was going on. I want more information about how sampling is being done to determine how safe the water is. Where in the system are the samples being taken?[1670.58] Is it from the tanks themselves, or is it somewhere else far removed from the tanks? And, I mean, I'm not a local. I may always be looked at as an outlier, but I understand being true to your school and being, you know, true to your roots and proud of the place. I get that, but this has been such a monumental breakdown that I have to wonder if Norwood needs to be in the water business. Then I wonder if Greater Cincinnati Water Works would be willing to take on this system? And what would they do if they did? Would they take the tanks permanently offline? And if they did, where would the backup water supply come from? Would they replace the tanks? And if so, what would be the cost and who would pay? As a Norwood stakeholder, I require answers, communication, and transparency as we solve this problem together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodaro. Next is John Moore, speaking on the topic of Move Norwood Forward Podcast. If you could come up, give us your name and address. You'll have five minutes to address council.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. My name is John Moore. As many of you know, sorry, I live at 2432 Hudson Avenue. As many of you know, we have a big election this year. For the first time in 16 years, we will have a new mayor. For the first time in eight years, we will have a new president of council. All of these seats on council are up for grabs this year. And as you all know, with the issues you've been hearing about tonight, there are a lot of issues and challenges that our city faces. This is a really important election, and so if you're out there wondering, how do I wrap my arms around all of these things going on? I would like to invite you to check out the Move Norwood Forward Podcast where I have interviewed each of the three mayoral candidates, both candidates for president of council, all five, or five of the six candidates for the at-large council seats, and hopefully we'll later speak with the school representatives. And what this is, if you go to movenorwoodforward.com, you can listen to podcasts or radio programs on demand and hear from the mayoral candidates what they want to do about city government. You can hear from the president of council candidates about how they would like to change the culture of these meetings. You can hear from the at-large candidates on their ideas for roads and parks and so forth. It's organized in a very user-friendly way, and I would invite you, once again, to head over to movenorwoodforward.com to check out this entire election series where you can get up to date on the candidates and the issues. If elections, politics are not your thing, you probably wouldn't still be watching out in Facebook land, but if you are still watching, I'll trust that you have an interest in this. But if politics aren't your thing, there are episodes on the Wasson Way Bike Trail, the Off Pike Market, the Norwood City School District, and many others. There are more than 20 episodes out now, and I hope that you all will take the time to go and listen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is Kate Hand here to speak about the Norwood City water issue? If you'll again give us your name and address, you'll have five minutes to address council.
Thank you. My name is Kate Hand. I'm a resident at 2269 Adams Avenue in Norwood, and I'm here because I'm a concerned resident. My husband and I are raising two young children here, and I walked my kindergartner to Sharpsburg for the first time today. I am here because I want to express my anger and disbelief over the long-term neglect of our water towers and the subsequent decision to act against OEP A recommendations by repairing those towers rather than replacing them. My concerns are threefold. First, if our city government cannot be trusted to protect the most basic of our resources, putting our very water supply in jeopardy by utterly ignoring safety recommendations, then what other aspects of our health and safety are potentially at risk? This incidence, to me, constitutes gross negligence. And it calls into question every aspect of our lives here in Norwood and how our tax dollars are at work. It's a situation that instills fear and mistrust for our very well-being. Second, it seems to me that this is criminal negligence and possibly a state or federal matter. Was there really no plan in place after the 2014 warning? If not, why? If so, what happened to that plan? Was there money allocated to fix this out of local, state, or federal funds? If not, why? If so, where did it go? Who, besides Mr. Williams or Mr. Gears, knew about the 2014 OEP A letter? Did council address it? Was it part of the list of financial obligations from the 2017 fiscal emergency? If not, why? As taxpayers and voters, we deserve answers to these questions. I'm with Mr. Bonzal when you say that this body is held accountable. And it might be that there's not a conspiracy theory, and it might be that there wasn't ever any intention to do anybody harm, but being negligent and not understanding what you're doing and not being capable of this job and what this city understands, in my mind, that's almost worse. So, third, what outside council has the city secured to move forward with confidence in our decision to repair versus replace? If we're putting on a Band-Aid on this situation, when is the next time that Cincinnati is going to step in and take over our water? In the wake of water crises in Flint and Newark due to lead in the water, water is a hot-button issue right now. And like you, I wouldn't have moved to Norwood had I known this, right? And I moved to Norwood 12 years ago, and seven years ago, I made the decision to move again in Norwood and to stay here, and I would have moved out in a heartbeat. In fact, I've been searching for new houses since I found this. And that's so exciting to me because I love this neighborhood and everything it stands for. But do we really want Norwood to be thought of in that same breath? Negligence, leadership unconcerned about health and safety of its residents? That shouldn't be us. I see Norwood as an up-and-coming neighborhood with a tremendous amount of potential. Please don't put our water supply, our reputation, and our residents at risk.
Thank you, Ms. Hand. There, Leanne McNabb, regarding the library. If you'll come on up and give us your address, you'll have five minutes to address council.
Hello, my name is Leanne McNabb. I am not a resident of Norwood, but I am the newest manager of the Norwood Branch Library. Thank you for allowing me to come and share some information about an event tomorrow night. I know it's short notice, but as many of you know, we passed a levy last year to address some maintenance renovations and replacement issues throughout our sizable library system. In preparing for this, each branch is having a community listening session so that library administration and developers can interact with community members about the facility's master plan, discuss options as far as the future of the branch, as well as get feedback from the community. Norwood Branch's library listening session is tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM in the cafeteria at the Norwood Community Center on Portland. I know this is short notice, but if any of you can make it, we'd love to see you there. If you can't make it, you can still leave feedback on our website. So, if you're on cinsanatylibrary.org, there's tabs at the top, Find About Us, and you'll see the Facility Master's Plan, and that will take you to a feedback form where you can let us know if you can't make it, still what your hopes for the future of the Norwood Branch Library are. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Can you say that website one more time? Where do people go?
www.cincinnatilibrary.org, and then go to the tab About Us and look for the option for Facility's Master Plan.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you. I had sent you an email that I would try to make it, and I'm not sure if I can. I have one thing to say, and that's make her space.
I did receive your email today, and I saw that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNabb. We have one more request to address council. Troy Davis, regarding the Fuel Cincinnati Outreach. Glad to have you here.
Hi, everybody. My name is Troy Davis. I'm a resident of Norwood. I've been here since 1992? 91? 91. First, real quick, I just wanted to say I love Off Pike Market. I think it's a great thing. I just wanted to say, if you haven't had a chance to stop by to see it, you really should stop by, see it yourself. I think you'll also see that it's really worthwhile, community effort. I think it deserves a lot of support, so I encourage them very much so to keep going, and I'll be there with you guys, too. So, thank you. Second thing I wanted to mention was about Fuel Cincinnati. So, Fuel Cincinnati is a program of Give Back Cincinnati, which is a nonprofit. It was formed as a way for young professionals to try to give back to their community. It's all volunteer. There's no paid staff.
Excuse me. Can you speak into your mic a little bit? Hold back, we're leaving.
That's going to cause problems, isn't it? Something like that? Okay. Let's try that. Is it okay if I do this?
Yeah, try it. You're welcome to try that, too.
All right, let's try that. How's that?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, Give Back Cincinnati, the first project that Give Back Cincinnati organized was actually to paint Norwood High School, to repaint it back in the year 2000 or 2001. That was right after its founding. It was one of the first things that it ever did. Fuel Cincinnati is a newer program. It's existed for about six or seven years now. It's a program of Give Back Cincinnati. I've served on its board for the last four years. Currently, the vice chair. I was chair for two years prior. They've asked me to come here in order to extend an outreach of efforts. Fuel is going through some changes. Since that first project with Give Back Cincinnati, there's been some, a lot of different efforts that have been funded by Give Back Cincinnati in terms of Paint the Town, I think was here at least once, maybe twice over those years. I believe there were several other efforts that happened in Norwood as well. The most recent thing that I can think of that we're involved with was through Fuel Cincinnati where we gave grant funding for Youth Voices TV, which is an effort by Mrs. Lila Kubesh, who's a teacher at Norwood Middle School. It's a wonderful thing. She surveyed her students and found out that the middle school kids felt like nobody paid attention to them. Nobody listened to their questions. Nobody would answer their questions honestly. It was a really big problem on their mind. She helped them renovate the TV studio that's in the high school, turn it into a TV production facility again, train the students, get some volunteers to help out. A little bit of funding was needed for that, and Fuel gave a grant to help her overcome her funding obstacles so that she could get that program online. They now have TV shows that are on the web, and they're producing a website to house those as well. It's a really nice program. We're very supportive of Mrs. Kubesh and her efforts. Second grant she had from us, actually, is Fuel. But Fuel is changing. We're probably going to have a significant increase in funding pretty soon to sponsor larger grants. In the past, Fuel has funded grants up to $2,500. The byline of Fuel is that we help launch new nonprofit ideas. So, if you have a new nonprofit idea that you want to try out in your neighborhood or community, Fuel is available to give you a grant for up to $2,500 to help you try out that idea. And we hope that these ideas turn into a much larger volunteer community affair in all of the different neighborhoods that we support throughout the greater Cincinnati area. Norwood has been a center of our attention many times in the past, and it's our attention now again. As part of Fuel increasing its funding and potentially increasing the types of grants and the amounts of grants that it can give out, there is an opportunity to work with neighborhoods. And we've been asked by the people, the very kind people that fund us, which is the Hail Foundation, they've asked us to localize some of our efforts in neighborhoods of need throughout the city. Norwood is one of those cities. I'm here tonight as a board member of Fuel to ask, simply to get out the word that Fuel Cincinnati is here in Norwood, that we're looking for opportunities to help nonprofit efforts here, and we thank you very much for your attention and time. And I'm very open to hearing about all of the challenges and all of the problems that you think that maybe something like this might help overcome, and I welcome any community engagement that you might be willing to offer.
Mr. Davis, can you let folks know how to reach you so that they can engage around that?
Yes. FuelCincinnati.org is our website. We're also on Facebook. If you search for Fuel Cincinnati, we'll come up first. We encourage you to reach out to us through those methods, and that's probably the easiest ways to reach us.
You said Fuel or fueled?
Fuel. F-U-E-L-Cincinnati.com or .org. I'm sorry, .org.
FuelCincinnati.org.
Yeah, that's correct. So, thank you very much. I'd also like to mention I'm also the scoutmaster for Troop 9 here in Norwood, the scout troop, and they're a wonderful group of people, and we have such great community support here in Norwood, and I'm really glad that I live here, and I really appreciate the support we've gotten from everyone here in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've come to the end of our agenda item on other requests to address council. Based on our motion earlier, we've amended the agenda to have the administrative reports take place at this time. Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, the responsibility lies with me. I'm the mayor. I'm not going to push it off on Joe or nobody else. It's my responsibility. So, what I'm going to tell you is what I've got for a fact. The last thing, absolutely the last thing we would do is put anybody at risk. Our families live here. Our grandchildren live here. So, that's just not heard of. What I have here tonight is I want to enter into council. These are all the water reports. Every one of them is a water report from 2014, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Every one of these reports were positive. Not one problem, not one time, has any problem been detected to this water. Not once. These are taken periodically from 15 different locations throughout the city once a month. They are done by the health department. Somebody asked where the health department was. The health department's always involved. Without them, this couldn't happen. So, these reports are given, sent to Joe. Joe sends them to the EPA. Every one of these reports go to the EPA. There you are, young Joe. Also, what I want to show you is these are reports that are sent out every year to every water user. Absentee landlords, if the water's in your name, you get one of these. In these brochures, every year, it's a consumer report. It gives all of the technical data, how to do it, how it works, and it gives all the testing. And I'll bet you money the people that get these, the people that are talking the most have gotten these and never read it. These are documents that are sent out. You want transparency? There it is. And not one time did we fail a test. Not once. Okay? So, let me move on. And the next thing I want to say is, I know, no matter what I say, it's not going to change a lot of minds. The skepticism's going to be there. The social media is going to continue. I can't stop that, nor will I try to compete with it. I'll just tell you what we say. The other thing I want to say is, I received requests from Marilyn and Joe Sankar. Those are the two council members. Marilyn jumped all over. And we were going through a stage where this first broke that we had to be careful what we said. So, here's a sequence of events. I don't have, you know, all the documents that go with it. May 14, 2014, Dixon Engineering inspected the tanks by robotic equipment. The report court was completed at their recommendation. Temporary roof repairs were made. Repairs were made to both tanks where related health issues included the exterior patching of both tanks and repair to both roof vents. The project included Dixon specifications and inspections during the repairs. Their engineering firm that do tanks. So, EPA came for a survey, made their three-year survey, and were given the report. It was decided at that time to begin the process to take those tanks offline, which we did, or we started the process. July 8, we had a greater conference call with Greater Cincinnati Water Works. We turned around after the conference call, after several conversations with Mayor Cranley, and met with Greater Cincinnati Water Works, the director and her staff in our conference room on July 9. On July 12, there was a meeting with the Cincinnati for planning and contract. Contract was involved. We took Tim Gary. We asked Joe Sankar to go, and we took Clint, what is it? And we went down. The meeting lasted for about three and a half to four hours. In that meeting, they had several engineers, several department heads, and the idea of the meeting was, if you're going to take one of those tanks offline, you have to prepare. A quick history lesson. Back years ago, Joe Hochbine, in an effort, in a genuine effort, to find out about those tanks, because these tanks have been discussed for years with everybody. So, in an effort to look at the situation, they decided they was going to take one of those tanks offline and drain it. When they did, the pressure was such, they blew water lines, water heaters, water lines underneath, Siemens alles. Lines were blowing all over the place. And they had to quickly refill it and put it online. So, the process with Cincinnati was to, how do we prepare to take those tanks offline? We don't have the expertise, nor do we have the money to do it with. Okay? We have no money. So, we met with them and began the process. We started taking water samples from that tank every 24 hours, seven days a week, and we've been sending those water samples to the Cincinnati Health Department. When we brought Cincinnati onboard, we took those water samples, and they went right to Greater Cincinnati Water Works, their lab. So, it went right from the tank to the lab. So it went right from the tank to the lab. And not once have we had a negative test. They're all negative, I mean, negative means you've got a clean test. So the smaller tank has been drained, it's been inspected, they're going to disinfect it, and under the guidance of the EPA, raise the level back of that tank. See, the problem is, you cannot operate without those tanks. The EPA has told us for a long time, you need, your usage is 3 million gallons per day. You have to have a reserve of 3 million gallons. So the ballpark figure for 3 million gallon tank is $2 a gallon. $6 million. Now, I think everybody knew that that was going to be a tough, tough thing to crack. Two reasons. Number one, we're not sure that 6 million, you know, that a 3 million gallon tank will fit up there. And there's no use putting it down in the flats. That's a question. Other, other people say, I'm not sure, you can build a tank up there. Others say, if you build a tank, you have to tear those two down. So, the game plan became, or the so-called game plan, we was going, because it was changing every day, was to continue to prepare to shut that other tank down and bring this one back online. That was the goal, and that still is the goal. All the repairs are going to be short-term. If, if we're able to keep both of those tanks and do short-term repairs, they'll have to be done again in five years. Okay? That'll give, if we can do that, we can buy enough time to try to figure out what to do. Because now, you've got to drain those tanks every so often. Cincinnati, they have their tanks, even when the cost is, is high, they do a lot of the painting on their tanks in the wintertime, because they save money. So, that's the problem. Those tanks have to be dealt with. So there's, there's a lot to be done. We have, we have to keep those tanks in, for a short, a one-day supply. The other issue is, is that this is why you see the hydrants. The other crucial part of this is fire suppression. You have, we have to make sure that once you take it, one tank offline and put another one back online, that there is enough pressure there. So in case we have one of those fires like, you know, we've had in the past, these large fires, that we have enough water pressure to supply those apparatuses. So this is not something you just say, okay, we'll shut that one down, we'll do this. It's not that easy. It takes time. It takes expertise. It takes planning. And Cincinnati has been really good to us. The problem, when the problem first came out, it got blown up. Should I have said something earlier? I don't know. We, we was trying to figure out what our next move was going to be. We put out something, Sandal Waters say, that you was going to see something going on around the city. But we really didn't know for sure how it was going to go. We just didn't know. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, it's going to take some time, it's going to take a lot of effort, and a lot of expertise. I, I had a nice, and matter of fact, I was speaking to the, Joe and I had a conference call with the director of the Ohio EPA. She will be coming down. It was a pleasant conversation. We're all on the same page and we're all, all working to, you know, to save this. And she said, you know, about the funding and what do we do for tanks? And I said to her, it's very simple. And I'm going to say to you now, and I've been saying it, we have a lot of issues in this town. This is just one that jumped up and bit us. There's going to be more. This wasn't a secret. Most people knew that those tanks were a problem. The problem of it is, we didn't have $6 million. We just didn't have it. We were lucky we had $15,000 to replace it. When the Safety Service Director comes up and asks for a water increase, everybody goes nuts. Well, what are we going to do? One of the issues you'll hear is, maybe Cincinnati will take us over. Well, okay. Now Cincinnati takes you over, they're going to have to make repairs, and they're going to give you a surcharge to do that. So I don't care whether it's water, or buildings, or what it is. If we don't start investing in our infrastructure, this is just the beginning. True, am I, am I totally exempt? No. I'll take my hit, I'm the mayor. Come after me, I'm a big boy. I'm not running from anything or anybody. It's my responsibility, and I fully understand that. But I also understand that my family lives here. And I will take it personal if somebody accuses me or wants to walk up to me and tell me that I don't care about their safety. I will take that personal, because I do, and I accept my responsibility. Now what we have to do is figure out what our next step's going to be, we're working with EPA, and how we're going to go after this. Have I done it perfect? I don't know, I've never faced this before. We did the best we could. But we never, never put anybody's health at risk. We never failed a safe, failed a test. The EPA has said since day one, our water is safe to drink. They've always said that. They've never said anything else. It's only the rumor mill that's said that. Is it perfect? I understand the jokes, the burden, all that. I understand all that. But the problem of it is that, rather than coming up and saying, Mayor, I want to ask you about that, they didn't. We put out false information and rumors. That's what happened. Not facts.
Mr. Mayor.
Marilyn, you called, you called EPA. And you, you made an attempt. Everybody has. So I'm just telling you, we'll get it solved, and if you've got a question, you know where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I believe there are questions. I see at least one hand here. Mr. Thompson?
It's really difficult for me to know where to begin with this. I appreciate that you're taking responsibility for this. You said that, that those brochures that you pass out are the city's attempted transparency. This is actually the first time I've received any communication from you about this situation. I have no idea. The only thing I know about this situation is from the reports that people have made records requests and placed online, or from news departments. I'm on city council. We're all on city council. We have received zero communication from the city. You have spent money with zero communication with council. You have made decisions with zero communication with council. You did this because you waited till it was an emergency situation. You waited five years till it was an emergency situation and the EPA made you do it. You have a water purveyor, whatever Mr. Gears' title is, who doesn't know what he's doing. You might not, you might not like that I say that, but I know that we're up there training him how to clean our tanks. Cincinnati is training him how to clean our tanks. We've never cleaned our tanks. How many feet of sludge were in the bottom of the tanks?
I'm not sure.
I know how many. There were 18 feet of sludge in the bottom of our water.
That's not true. I don't believe you.
Well, you said you're not sure. That's what I've heard.
Oh, that's what you've heard?
Well, that's what I've read from the documents that people have put online.
Right, and you believed it online. You didn't call me.
Because their EPA, you haven't returned a single email I've sent in the last three or four months, neither has Mr. Gears. You guys are so upset that we, we decided that Mr. Gears should treat his employees with more respect and you've got all.
Mr. Thompson, let's stay on topic.
I am staying on topic. This is, this is a matter of the way that our administration runs this city.
Is there a?
I am very much staying on topic. I don't appreciate your complete lack of transparency, your complete lack of... I know that you say you're accepting responsibility, but, but, but waiting five years to address a problem. We've been working on financial recovery plans and, and the capital improvement plans for two years now, or a year and a half since I've been on council. Not once did somebody mention from the administration that we had to do something about those water towers. We contacted Mr. Gears about the capital improvements plan. Mr. Gears, not once in the capital improvements plan said we needed to address the water towers. There's been no transparency at all about the needs of that. Now, if you would have started five years ago, maybe we could have figured out a way. I say we figured it out, because I was on council. Maybe council, maybe the city could have figured out a way to begin to fix the problems that we have. But we didn't. We waited, we waited until the EPA slapped us in the hand, and then we, we declared an emergency or whatever you have to do, so you don't have to talk to us about what you're doing. It's not the way you run a city. It's definitely not the way you provide water to the people who live here. It's, it's, it's absolutely pathetic. If I were you, I would be looking for a new water purveyor or whatever that title is called. I know that the city of Cincinnati can loan us one if we want. We need somebody who knows what they're doing. I also know that we don't pay Mr. Gears for that service. I believe we've seen that we've gotten what we paid for. And so, no, I'm, and so, this, this, we will continue to work on this. Those of us who are on council will continue to work on this after you're no longer the mayor, because this isn't going to be solved now. Those of us who, who are, or anybody who's interested in running and wanting to be on council, this is what we'll be dealing with for quite some time. It's not just the towers, the entire water infrastructure is totally shot, because nothing's been done for it for 80 years.
See, you say eight years.
I said 80 years.
Eighty, eighty years.
Eighty.
Stormwater and everything else. And here, now that we want to raise the issue, one of the reasons that I have a problem with is because you, on a couple occasions, have said, what you do is like everybody else. You form an accusation in the form of question. Could it be that he's doing this because of this? So you make an accusation in the form of a question.
I don't believe I made an accusation in the form, what exactly did I say? I've made several accusations, I don't believe I questioned any of them.
Sure you did.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Thompson.
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Sager.
It's getting to be personal.
Yes.
And also, we're off topic.
Thank you, Mr. Sager.
I don't believe we're off topic, I believe we're still talking about the water issues.
I acknowledge your point of order. Mr. Thompson and Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, are you finished with your report to council?
Sure, I, I just, I want to continue on by saying that we, we've done everything we can, we will continue to do everything we can. The documentation's there that the water is safe. It has been safe. There's never been a time when it wasn't safe. And we're doing everything we can to rectify the problem. And the problem just didn't start, now it didn't start five years ago, it started 25 years ago and 30 years ago. And you have to make decisions based on fact and experts, and that's what we're doing. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comments. Is that a question, Mr. Bonzall?
It is a question, yes.
Is it for the mayor?
It is for the mayor.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, you can do it sitting down, you want, whichever.
Do you want to sit?
Yeah, I'll just say, yeah, I'll just sit down, probably a good thing. So my question is, okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I called you some weeks ago and talked to you about communication and about the need to communicate to council and communicate, you know, to the public about like what's going on. And the response that I got was basically, you were saying, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it, you know. I would just urge you that if you, to just start tomorrow, I mean, you know, we can go figure out what the heck happened in the past, and I still, we're still really upset, and Mr. Thompson is right on with everything he said. But I think it would be very wise of you to start tomorrow and start communicating with people. Send letters to council that get posted on, online. Put something on the water bill that kind of says, explains like what's going on. People are ratepayers here, they're paying for the service, and they feel like they're not getting it. And part of the reason they feel like they're not getting it is because there's no communication going on. So again, we've got to communicate. And one last thing I want to say is that, you said, Mr. Mayor, that you are going to take full responsibility, that you're the top, that you're the full responsibility. But, Mr. Mayor, you are not the licensed operator of record for the water. That's Joe C. Gears. And so you can't absolve him of all of his responsibility in this process as well. And so I would just encourage you to take a unbiased look at the job performance that's been there when it comes to being the water purveyor, and exactly like Mr. Thompson said, look at potentially replacing him. I think that we could find some money to get a water purveyor from Cincinnati to actually run the system correctly. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzall. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for speaking. I had already, I have told people that in New Business, I was going to ask for a meeting next week, so people could come and ask questions, and we were going to ask you and Mr. Gear, I was going to ask if you and Mr. Gears would attend. I know a lot of those people have questions, and they would have been here tonight, but I stated that I wanted to have a special meeting for this. And I was wondering if we called one later, if you would be willing to come back and talk about this again, and have Mr. Gears here also.
Tell me when, we'll talk about it. Yeah, we'll try to do something to help you out.
Thank you.
So, at this time, we're going to take a break, is my suggestion, before concluding with the agenda. It's a little different when you're a member of council and chairing, so I'm going to make a motion that we take a five to 10-minute break, seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Please call the roll. Any discussion, any discussion on that? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzall?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Sure.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sager?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayton?
Sure.
The, motion does pass. We're going to take a break. Thanks. We'll be back in five to seven. We'll be back in five to seven. This session of the Norwood City Council is now back in session and we have arrived at the agenda item for unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Okay. Seeing none, we move on to new business. All right, so Mrs. Hanahan, then Mr. Sager.
I would like to suggest calling a meeting, maybe a council hall, to talk about the water issues and invite possibly the EPA or Cincinnati Water along with the mayor and Joe Gears.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, just maybe if I could respond to the previous member. I think it'd be a great idea to call a special meeting for, talk about some of these water issues. I think that we should try to maybe talk for just a moment to see kind of what our objective might be to have a meeting. So our objective would help us to lead to whether we want to... Do we just want the mayor and Joe Gears here? Do we want to have, see if Ohio EPA will come and speak to us about like what's going on? Do we want to see if Greater Cincinnati Waterworks will come?
Mr. Bonzal, can I interject for just one second? I want to clarify. Mrs. Hanahan, was that a motion to schedule a special meeting? Or was that... I just want to make sure.
I don't know if I necessarily made a motion, but I will make a motion.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. I knew we were getting into discussion. So did you want to, were you intending to second that or just discuss?
I mean, I don't know what the full, what, you know, are you... Do you have a time in mind? I mean, I guess, I feel like before we actually like set a meeting, we should probably talk about like, again, the objective of what we're going to talk, what we're going to discuss.
Okay. Then continue, Mr. Bonzal, and I'll come back to that in just a moment, Mrs. Hanahan.
Okay. So again, we just, I think we should try to figure out exactly what we want to, which path we want to move forward next. And so, sure, yeah, we can have a meeting and then at that meeting, I guess, we could then talk about the path. But I'd rather try to save a step to see if we have ideas of where we want to move with this. We can go ahead and do that. And then we can also work on inviting the appropriate parties as well. So, yeah, I'm very much open to... I'd like it to be a special meeting, though, where the agenda items are like, you know, public, public comment on agenda items and like a discussion or what have you. Because I'd like us to have the ability at that special meeting so that we can take action, whether it be send a letter, whether it be have a motion, whether it be whatever. If you're at a committee, the whole meeting, then you can't actually take like official action like that. So just my suggestions. But yes, I'm very open in response to the previous council member. I'm very open to having a special meeting on the topic.
So the discussion thus far is that we consider calling a special meeting for the topic of the water issues and include public comment on the agenda item of water issues. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's fine with me. I would love for the residents, not necessarily because I think we'll be packed. I think we'll have a lot of people here, but to actually be able to have a question and answer, period, for people.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Sager? What did you? Okay. Mr. Brayden?
Oh, yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm just curious if, if a special meeting is where we want to go? Or... The mayor just submitted all our test results. Basically, I take him on his word and say they all passed. So I guess my question is, is a special meeting the correct path? Or do we want to put the discussion in a commit? I'm just trying to figure out what this meeting is for. Is it to talk about water? Because he just proved to us that the water is safe to drink if I take him on his word, which I do. Or are we planning on what we're going to do with these tanks? And how do we repair these tanks? Is that what discussion is? Because maybe that's a committee? Or is that a special meeting? That's my response.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. And I want to ask a question to the clerk of council and maybe even the law director. The mayor did offer a lot of documentation right now to council. I think more so as a body than as a committee. Do we need to take any action to acknowledge that? I mean, my understanding, these documents belong to some department. They don't belong to council, so...
Madam President, I would say these are copies that have been provided to go into council's-
Oh, in-
Into the clerk's records to be on file. If anybody wants to take a look at them, they are the monthly test results and the periodic mailers, copies of the periodic mailers go out. There are also copies of the periodic test results at the health department. And I think Mr. Gears has a copy, but the health department would be a place if anybody really wants to go through them. But he wanted them on file here at council. So council can take a look. If anyone wants to come in the clerk's office and see what's in there.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Then I stand corrected. We did not, at the conclusion of the administrative report, receive and file the report. I'm understanding now that that might need to be an appropriate step? No? So then how do we actually get those into the record?
Well, they're not really in the record. They're just in the, they're in the minutes and a copy will be in these will be in the clerk of council's office.
Okay. Thank you. So then Mr. Brayden's question is, do we need a special meeting or a committee meeting to look at the documents? Or is that your question?
My, my, my question is, are we talking about, because the paperwork submitted, if I take Mr. Williams on his word, says that we have passed our tests, our water tests. Our water is good to save to drink. So now are we talking about that? Or are we talking about what, where we're going to get the money to fix these tanks? I guess that's the question that I have.
I see Mr. Thompson and then Mrs. Hanahan.
I think, I think, I'm not trying to speak for you, Mrs. Hanahan, but I think that it's more of a point of if-
You speak well. It's okay.
If, if the community has further questions about the issues, we understand that we've got the reports and we know that they're sound. But there's, there's still, all, all of the information about this up until Mayor Williams' report to us tonight is literally from, from news reports and document releases. And so if anybody would want to have a forum for coming and, and asking specific questions about the entire episode, I think that would be the purpose of the meeting. And it would benefit to have not only the mayor and Mr. Gears here, but, but also representative from Cincinnati Waterworks, if possible, and the EPA, if possible. For, for anybody in the public who might have questions or for, or for us, because quite honestly, we, we don't have any official information.
Mrs. Hanahan. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, Mrs. Hanahan.
Mr. Thompson actually answered it. It would be for any resident who wants to come. Nobody was aware, or I wasn't aware that the mayor was going to be here. And I think if we actually have a meeting, tell people, you know, there are lots of people out there with lots of questions and I think they deserve the opportunity to ask them.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you so much. I think there, so, yes, I think we've got to get the questions from the residents. They need to get their questions answered. But I do think there's like some actual work that like we need to get started on, or at least to start talking about. For one, we've got to figure out, like, I mean, what are they, are, are those water towers actually safe to sit there for another five years? He stated that they were. I'm not quite sure of that. Two, there's some issues on, you know, again, just the complete, you know, ignoring- Two, there's some issues on, you know, again, just the complete, you know, ignoring the stuff that was in the original report, and is, are they actually going to spend $600,000 to repair the tanks like it had in the report, or are they just going to kind of let it sit there for five years? I mean, you know, their intention for five years, again, of course, they're not going to be here then. The third thing would be, you know, the mayor kept saying, "We have no money, how do we do this with no money?" Well, if we've got no money, then we need to figure out, are there grants that we can go after, is there other things that we can do? The Ohio EPA Deputy Director for Government Affairs, from people that I've heard that I've talked to them, don't remember exactly which person, but I think it might have been you, Councilmember Hanahan. There was some hints that potentially there could be some funding available to kind of help with this, that they have some money set aside for emergencies. So, in my, it could be loans, but it could be other stuff, I don't know. But in my opinion, though, like, again, you know, maybe there's two meetings, maybe we have one meeting to hear from the public and try to answer questions, and then there's a second meeting where we actually have like the head of like Greater Cincinnati Waterworks here, that, maybe somebody else here that can really, we can get down to, really dig into figuring out like what actually needs to be done next. And the mayor keeps saying, again, "We have no money." But again, the mayor controls the, through the Safety Service Director, controls the water rates in the city. And so, I would just, you know, it's a very bad excuse to say we have no money for why we neglected the water tanks, because he's the one that controls the, how much money we have. And council always, it's been tradition, that we always appropriate up to the amount of the estimated resources in the water fund. So, if he had raised the rates that next year, we would automatically appropriate at that new level from whatever rates that they raise. So, again, you know, we have no money, it's not a great excuse on this one, because they have the ability. And I would think that residents would, would pay, as much as you don't want to, like residents would have rather paid a little bit extra than the risk having, you know, dead animal matter in their water. And then, you know, I guess the last thing I just want to kind of note for the record is just kind of an appreciation for all the work that we've seen in the public releases, but that the City of Cincinnati's kind of done for us. Like, basically, when the City of Cincinnati screws up when it comes to water, and they make like a very minor mistake, like the Ohio EPA is like jumping down their throat, like $100,000 fine, $50,000 fine, I mean, there's no like, hey, let's call Norwood and see if Norwood can help. I mean, it's like, it's very, very serious. So, the fact that we have all these really serious kind of violate, or some serious violations, and they didn't just jump our, down our throat with the fine, they went and got the City of Cincinnati and said, "Hey, please, will you help Norwood?" You know? And they, we're paying a cost for it, but I guess there's just an appreciation there, because they really didn't have to say yes. I mean, they're elected officials, and some of their city administration has spent nights and weekends working on this, working on trying to figure out how they can, the legal framework for how they're going to help us. So, it's good that we have a partner that's willing to do that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. So, it sounds like there's at least some interest. Is there a formal motion? Mrs. Hanahan?
I'd like to make a motion that we have a special meeting, invite Mayor Williams, Mr. Gears, and the EPA, and/or, and/or wait on Cincinnati Waterworks. Let's invite them all, see who's willing to come.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Okay, I'm thinking, are we going to try to set a date today for when we want to do it?
I think we should do that, if we're going to, and in this, in this moment of discussion, I think it'd be great to see, can we come up with a date? That way, we'll know when we're inviting folks to. Otherwise, I can take note of a few dates, and we can ask the clerk to send a letter out to these parties that we'd like to attend.
Yep. I would say for me, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Okay, so for me, the next Tuesday, the 20th, would be a great day to do it. I'm, I'm very flexible in the time, but if we're going to have other people come, professionals that work normal business hours, we'd probably try to want to do it as early as possible. So, I'm thinking like six o'clock meeting would probably be the best chance of getting people there.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mrs. Hanahan?
That's fine.
Tuesday, August 20th, 6:00 p.m. Mr. Thompson?
That's fine with me.
Mr. Sinker, Mr. Braden?
I'll do my best.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, the motion on the floor is to call a special meeting on Tuesday, August 20th, at 6:00 p.m., here in council chambers. It's likely to be open, but we'll confirm there's no conflict for the purpose of discussing, I'm going to say, the water system issues, and also receiving public comment on the agenda item of water system issues. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask the Clerk of Council to send a letter to the Deputy Director of the EPA and an email, along with, from Cincinnati Waterworks, is Kathy?
Yep, yep, Kathy Bailey.
That's it. Kathy Bailey, and inviting them.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Braden?
We're in discussion, we're in discussion mode, right?
Um, yeah. I was rephrasing the motion. Yes, we are still in discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that they're watching this, because we just got to be careful, because we just got, we just got paperwork that says every one of our tests passed, says our water, we can drink it. So, I just want to make sure that's out there, that he just provided information. Now, unless he falsified that, that's there. So, and I really don't think that's the case. So, our, our water, the EPA says it's drinkable, so I don't want to make something bigger than it is. So, I drink the water every day, and I don't want, I don't want people to, to, to think that, you know, we're not, we're not on their side. I drink the tap water every day, and I believe it's safe, and I think that we just got, you know, as soon as I look over that, we've just got proof of that. So, I just want to make sure that that's out there, so that no one's thinking that, you know, there's other issues when there might not be.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. I, I think that the discussion surfaced, yes, safety and communicating safety, there were questions about reporting, as well as the actual funding to do any type of replacement or repair. We're all topics related to the water system issue that might be discussed, but I think we have that noted. Any more discussion on whether or not to call a special meeting for Tuesday, August 20th, at 6:00 p.m. to discuss the water system issues, and allow for public comment, addressing, letters and emails to all the parties? Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes, that would be nice.
Letters and emails sent from the Clerk of Council to the mayor, Mr. Gears, the Executive Director of Greater Cincinnati Waterworks, the Director and Deputy Director of the EPA, Ohio EPA. Okay. Call roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sinker?
Okay.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. The motion passes. Any other new business? So, for those who are interested, I just want to create a reminder that also, on Tuesday, August 20th, Paycor is hosting Career Day. That goes from 4:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. over at their headquarters. You can register online at paycor.com. If you go to their careers page and scroll all the way to the bottom, you'll see available positions. There is an event there called Paycor Career Day, and anyone who registers ahead of time or shows up will receive an interview. And so, really want to encourage folks who are looking at ways to either advance their career or try out new skill sets, take advantage of that opportunity as well. More information about that is on their website, it's also on their Facebook page. So, just want to give a hearty thanks to Paycor for making that possible, and making a concerted effort to make Norwood residents aware. Any other new business? We move on to the next agenda item, which was communications. We've already addressed the number one there. We move on then to Chuck Barlow regarding earning tax collections.
Dear council members, attached are reports reflecting earning tax collections through June 30th, 2019. Collections are running ahead of projection by $372,472.65, and ahead of last year's collection by $499,350.72. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Chuck Barlow, Tax Commissioner.
Mr. Thompson?
I would move, we receive and file the letter.
Mr. Sinker seconded that. Any discussion? Mr. Sinker? Did you have any discussion?
Oh.
No, I've got, I noted you as the second for the motion to receive and file the letter. Seeing no discussion, the call of roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sinker?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
The motion passes. Thank you. Next is Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court fines.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of July 2019. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Sinker?
I recommend that the report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sinker?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
The motion passes. Thank you. Next is Keith Moore regarding Trex liquor license.
To Norwood City Council, I received this request on Wednesday and was asked by Mr. Moore to put it on the agenda for Tuesday. This is the first time anyone has seen this, so no one has had time to have any objections to this if they do. This is on a premise beer consumption license for cappies on Clinti. This is the old Donna's carryout business. If you have any objections, please let me know. Pamela Hill, Secretary to the Clerk of Council.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I have huge problems with this. Donna's had, had been a problem for years. It took quite a while for the city to come in and take care of the issue, and Mr. Moore can probably talk on that if he wanted to. I did visit the store, nice, clean store, nice people running it, but in the area, you've already got two businesses right there, the neighbors, even though parking is not something, as the mayor said, that they look at, they weren't expecting a sports bar there. And so, now they're already concerned because there's going to be a sports bar, the traffic and the parking, and we have now, and what it is, is open container. They have, they sell, they sell their alcohol, but they have their taps, and right now, they're selling two ounces and growlers. What they're looking for are tables to have people come in and drink pints. And I just think this would be horrible for the neighborhood, and we've had major issues in that location with alcohol sales.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Is that a hand there? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I would agree with Mrs. Hanahan in that.
Could you speak up?
Yes, I would agree with Councilmember Hanahan in that I too feel like this is, I would have some objections to this. You know, with, we just had Donna's, you know, basically forced to surrender their liquor license because of illicit activities and number of police runs to the place. And from what I'm being told, it's the same owners, they just gave up their liquor license and renamed it. I thought that maybe it sold, but it didn't. So, you know, I don't under, I don't think that we would want to, especially with a Trex license, where, where we literally have to sign and give approval for them to do this. It's not like something that they can do, like they didn't just purchase a license from somebody else in Norwood, they're trying to bring one in. So, you know, I personally feel like this is more of a privilege, and I've been very supportive of these Trex licenses for many of the businesses in Rookwood, and I still stand by that support. But I think with this specific one, especially if you're talking about economic development, like I don't understand what economic development, having a bar there is going to spur. Plus, with their parking arrangements, not that I'm that concerned about parking, but it is something to note, right now, people just go in and out. So, like, they're not actually there sitting in the parking lot very long. So, while parking's kind of an issue, it also, their clientele isn't sitting there a long time. But if you have people there now, now, sitting there to drink for longer periods of time, then it could cause more issues. But again, I do think whatever we need to do as a council to like object to this, or to not have this be signed, or discuss it, whatever, I definitely want to move forward with that process, because I, I don't think that this would be a value add for the citizens of Norwood.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Moore, do you have anything you want to add?
Thank you, Madam President. We've had the conversations about Trex licenses in the past. I wanted council's feedback. I know that since we've not had a chance to get back feedback from the Tax Department, the Building Department, the Police Department. The Chief of Police did actually reach out to them. They want to expand their craft beer presence, and be kind of a destination for craft beers, be able to offer more free samples than they can under the current license, and they've apparently not had any police runs there since the change in ownership. So, that's all I know. I'm perfectly happy to leave it to council, and perhaps the administration, I don't know if they've even seen it, I don't know if they have a strong feeling, if the mayor has a strong opinion either way, but, you know, I'm not planning to go forward without council approval on approving a Trex license.
Could you repeat that last part?
I'm not planning to move forward, because I, I actually have the authority to sign a Trex transfer all by myself and not ask anybody. I'm not planning to do that without approval from council.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there, is there a timeline in which a Trex needs to be acted on?
We don't, if we don't sign it, then it doesn't get acted on.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Braden, and then Mr. Bonzal. Did you have any?
Madam President.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Moore.
I did advise them that when the council meeting was, and you guys would be here to talk to about if they wanted to come here tonight. Just, I have not heard from anybody since then, other than the mayor, other than the Chief of Police's communication. So, they didn't know the meeting was today.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, the department heads have not all had a chance to review this. Okay. Mr. Braden, and then Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. So, just to, just to be clear, a Trex license is brung in from elsewhere, and it's been stated before that that devalues other license. Is that true? Do you have anything to say about that?
Sort of. There's a quota. Every city's got to be, every community has a quota on how many liquor licenses of different classes they're allowed to have. If you are over your quota, if you're at or over your quota, then the Trex process is a way to circumvent, circumvent that restriction in order to spur economic development. So, the idea is, I think if you've got a bunch of, you know, old corner bars, but you want to build this big entertainment center, or a stadium, or something, and they need a liquor license, they can't get it from anybody else, then the Trex is a way to purchase one from outside of the city. Now, because of that, if there's a quota, that means there's a restriction on how many there can be, which drives up the price. So, it does, it would be cheaper to buy one outside of Norwood than inside, assuming one's available for sale in Norwood. I don't know if there currently is one available, if any, if any of the current license holders would be interested in selling for any price, but in theory, yeah, generally Trex licenses are cheaper.
Can I follow up, please?
Yes, Mr. Braden.
Thank you. So, I'm a little intrigued. I know that corner is, is going through some revitalization, and there's some really good work going on, on that corner. So, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm a little curious on if we do pass this, maybe that, that place follows suit. And like you said, I'm going to take that into consideration when you said that there has not been any runs since this person just took over. So, I'm, I'm a little intrigued with the, the whole situation. So, I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, maybe he follows suit, because there's a couple other buildings there that's really nice, and maybe, maybe they follow suit, so.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Mr. Bonzal, and then Mrs. Hanahan?
So, I just wanted to note that it would be, yes, it'd be, I'm glad the Law Director is not going to sign it without our approval, because once this is signed, there's still a, like, a license transfer thing that comes to council, and I can pretty, well, I'm not going to say it, but I would very much encourage council at that point to object, and then that would create more work for the law department. So, I think your good decision not to sign it, Mr. Moore, because I think that if it, if we got to that point, I mean, I think we, I would want to at least look to see how we can block it, so.
Madam President, did he say, can I, can I?
Can you repeat your statement, Mr. Bonzal?
Okay. So, this is, this form just allows the actual, the Trex thing to hap, it's the first step, I guess, in allowing the Trex thing to happen. But once the Trex, once that starts getting initiated, we still get notified as a body that this Trex transfer is happening, and so we can still object to it at that point. But you wouldn't have, I mean, most cities, you would not, like, sign the paperwork as a city and then go and object to it. I mean, you're causing yourself more work. So what I was saying is it's good that he is not signing this, because he probably would have caused himself more work.
Okay. I thought you said that you would advise us not to support that.
Yeah, I would, I personally would advise the rest of council at this point, based on not having the applicant here, anybody else, to not sign this. I, I think that we should be very careful before we move forward with this, and be very judicious in kind of this decision-making process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mrs. Hanahan, Mr. Senker, and then Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also encourage people not to want to do this, to reject this. This is in my ward. That corner was a nightmare to residents for years, and it took years for the city to be able to come in and close it down. And I just would hate to see something happen again. You're just encouraging, you know, it's a, it's a large, it's an area where if I would be up there at one of the restaurants that's there, and I park on the side next to that, you constantly had, you had hookers, you had people begging for money, you had people selling drugs. And it happened regularly. And I think, you know, people who live in the neighborhood will also attest to that. And it just took, you could, Mr. Moore, may I ask Mr. Moore how long it took to finally get them closed?
I'm not sure how long...
It was years.
It was attempts to, you know, file objections and all the rest of it. It was the county that came in and declared it a nuisance and closed it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Senker?
I don't believe we have a motion on the floor. I was just going to make a motion that the letter be received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. Senker. Is there a second? Mr. Braden, any discussion? Mr. Thompson?
If I remember right, in a lot of these situations, we've gotten feedback from police and fire department. Have they been given the opportunity to review this yet?
It's my understanding that they have been sent this, and only Chief Kramer of Police Department has initiated some response. I think this just got to them last week, or between last Wednesday and today. Last, last Wednesday, is that when it got to you, Mr. Moore?
I think it was Friday. The email stated Friday.
Last Friday?
Late Friday.
Okay. And at that time, last Friday, the departments would have been notified?
No, we got, as far as I know, we haven't gotten back from anybody, except I just happened to be copied on the emails with the chief.
So I think in the past, we've asked the clerk of council to ask the departments to respond by a certain time, just as a point of clarity. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Senker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
The motion passes. The next communication is from Kelly Brown regarding July financial reports.
Dear council members, this letter is to let you know that the July monthly financial reports were emailed to each council member on August 6th. If you have not received said email, please let me know so that I can verify your email address and also get you a copy of the reports. Sincerely, Kelly Brown, Account Clerk, Auditor's Office.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Senker?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, the motion passes. The next communication is from Tim Maloney regarding credit, city credit cards.
Dear members of council, per Resolution 3-2019, a quarterly report must be prepared in reference to City of Norwood credit cards issued. As of June 30th, 2019, the information is as follows. Number of active credit cards: two. Expiration date of the cards: April 2022. Credit limit: $2,500. Respectfully submitted, Timothy Maloney, Treasurer, City of Norwood.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you. I would move that the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by, I think it was Mr. Braden's hand, I saw first. Any discussion? I have one question. I'd like to request that the clerk of council's office review that Resolution 3-2019 and send a letter back to council confirming, does this report actually include everything[1637.76]